I don't know if we should be sitting next to each other.
No, I'm going to relocate you.
I gotta find my agenda. I think I left it in my notebook. Yeah, I took all my stuff. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm gonna call us to order and I want to... You gonna be advancing the slides? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you everyone for coming. I'll call our workshop for Wednesday, December 7th, 2022 to order. And I want to thank the staff for getting our new setup here. I've got us in this configuration with the hope that it'll facilitate more discussion amongst the board members and staff. Because I think the work sessions and the purpose of these are supposed to be for us to come together and to receive information from staff. The board members for us to sort of talk and discuss, ask our questions of staff, talk and discuss among ourselves. And I think this format is gonna facilitate that a little bit more. And I would ask that our presenters, if they come to the table and sit here and speak with us instead of to us. All right, if we could. So with that, first up, we have from facilities, we have the Castaldi update from Ms. Nguyen.
And also Old Terwilliger and Littlewood School. I love this new setup. I really think it's a lot less ominous. I'm Suzanne Nguyen. I'm the Director of Community Planning, also known as Planning and Construction. So good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, and everyone, staff and everyone in attendance. So today, this is split into three sections. One is, the first section will be a brief update on the Castaldies. The three of them that we are presently working on, next steps for Old Terwilliger and the Littlewood redevelopment. Littlewood Elementary School redevelopment scope. Next. So in essence, we have three Castaldies that are in process. Last night, the board approved the Littlewood Castaldi. Be getting signatures on the application and submitting that to DOE. That's the next step after the board approves. DOE will review that analysis and then they'll provide the letter back to us with which buildings they approve to be demolished. Just because they approve a building to be demolished doesn't mean that we have to demolish a building. We can keep the building operational if we choose to do so. It's just we can't demolish any buildings. They don't give us permission to demolish. The next one that we were working on was Old Terwilliger. But after the orientations, it's what I heard from the board is it sounded like Hawthorne was more of a priority. So I pushed that one forward. I have the draft in my office now. And the next step for that is for me to review the draft and then bring that to the board for your approval. And I'm looking at probably in February. As you know, those reports are pretty hefty. So I need to go through that, review it, and then I'll bring the final report to you for approval to again submit to DOE. The next one after that is Old Terwilliger. The draft, if we keep going with the timeline we have now, is expected in early 2023. But as you will see in the subsequent Old Terwilliger next steps, I'm recommending that we hold that. So next, are there any questions or comments related to the Castaldi reports analysis that are in process right now?
So I'm not sure if this goes here, but I know you're recommending that we hold Old Terwilliger. It, I just want to say that that makes sense to me because if we haven't decided what we want to do with that property, it, we might not want to tear everything down, so.
And I think the other thing I look at is, you know, what are we spending on, you know, trying to use our funds efficiently? And for right now, it doesn't make sense to me to go forward with expending all those monies and completing that Castaldi analysis if we don't really need it. So I'm going, I'm recommending that we pause the work on that.
Ms. Nguyen, when you speak of the cost of that, I wasn't aware of that. Can you briefly tell us what goes into the Castaldi process and the cost of the district?
The cost for a Castaldi is $10,000. And that's, that's a thorough analysis of all the existing conditions on campus. So there's, there's much documentation, photo documentation, researching, old plans, and putting together the analysis that you've seen that's come to the board for many of our projects. We have to justify doing a cost analysis with DOE, taking down a building. But it's more cost effective to demolish a building and rebuild new construction than it is to invest in renovation. And that's, that's the justification of the analysis. And many of our schools, our older schools, there's, there's quite a few buildings that, that meet those qualifications.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Ms. Nguyen? Would you pull your back in?
Can you hear me? But you're gonna go over next steps.
Next steps for?
To Williger.
Yes, that's, I, I've divided the, the presentation into three sections. So this is just specific to the Castaldies that we have in process.
All right.
So the next steps for the Castaldies are, I'm reviewing Hawthorne and that will come to you in, I'm targeting February for your approval. So as we get, when I get your approval, I'll submit that to, to DOE. Next. So Old Terwilliger, next steps, we have, there are a few encumbrances on the property. So one is a GRU easement that is being investigated by the legal team. What is the extent of the easement? Can it be abandoned? What would be the procedure and steps for doing that? Additionally, the city of Gainesville has a 99-year stormwater lease agreement on the property. Again, that's being investigated as to the extent, does it encompass the entire property? Is it only a portion of the property? Can the lease be rescinded? Legal is investigating that as well. There are solar panels on the building, some of the buildings that need to be relocated if possible. And if not, then we'll need to cancel that contract and pay that out. So we need to get some cost analysis on that. So subsequent to those things, you know, seeing if we can get those items resolved and how they'll be resolved. I feel like those are the, the next first steps to get that property unencumbered. DOE would require a board approval of a spot survey to declare the property unnecessary for educational purposes pursuant to Florida statute 101328-1A. So that's a fairly simple process. You saw a spot survey last night for Sydney Lanier. That's a fairly, fairly simple process. The next step after that, that I've talked to Alex's team about with Mr. Garcia, would be to procure a professional via a request for quote to evaluate options to sell the property and provide appraisals for each option. So if we can get those encumbrances removed from the property, is it better for us to sell the property as is? Remove the buildings that are approved by DOE in a Castaldi and then sell? Is it better for us to rezone, change the land use and sell? Or is it better for us to rezone, change the land use, demolish buildings and sell? So that's, you know, those are some, some various options. I feel, I feel there are a few things that we need to resolve that I mentioned previously before we go issue an RFQ. And, and the very last bullet is to hold the Castaldi until it's determined to be worth it to demolish. So that might come after we eliminate encumbrances from the property. If it is something that you decide to sell the property, it might come after that RFQ. It could, it could fit in either one of those spaces. Next. So that's, that's the update status on next steps for Terwilliger. I believe Ms. Turney's mentioned that her and Mr. Delaney were working on memo related to Terwilliger. Is that, that's correct, right?
Thank you. We have, we are working with Wyserota to prepare a kind of a steps type of memo of if we were going to sell, trade, donate, you know, what would need to happen. Not necessarily Terwilliger's per specific, but generally for any type of property. So I, I believe that's coming hopefully this month to help give us some guidance.
And this steps memo is, the purpose of that, it would, is that for something that's in-house? Or is that for something to be sent to municipalities that were mentioned in the presentation?
It was guidance in-house.
In-house guidance, okay, okay.
And it sounds like it's not gonna be specific to Terwilliger, just?
Any, any property that's board on?
General, yes.
I have a question about what's happening with the solar panels right now. So I assume we're paying for them? Are we getting power from them since the buildings aren't in use? How is that working?
The solar panels are still there and, and attached and we're, they're still operational.
But what are they powering if, if we have empty buildings?
Well, it's, it's, yeah, it goes into the grid.
So GRU is like giving us money off of our overall bill because we're contributing to the grid? How is that working?
Well, the way that the lease works, are you familiar with the, the lease?
Lease agreement, so we lease our rooftops to the solar company. The solar company then provides us revenues derived from the solar leases in terms of how they feed back into the GRU. Great, I'm not 100% sure exactly how that works, but it is a revenue source for the district. And there are requirements within the contract, which I think was negotiated maybe 10 years ago, where we're, there's a, you know, obviously a revenue piece that comes to us at the conclusion of the lease. The solar panels themselves revert to us. So in the instance of Terwilliger, and I think there's been a couple of schools where we run into this, we have to kind of provide an alternate site and maybe some relocation costs associated with that pursuant to contract.
Anytime we redo a roof that has panels, we basically have to, the, the company comes out to remove them. They come out to put them back on. And then we extend the lease that period of time. They were not generating power. So we have that going on at Westwood currently. So if, if we were to get rid of, you know, dispose of the Terwilliger property, it would be a matter of relocating the panels to another site.
I have, I have a question. Are you finished?
No, I have one other question. Just one second. The solar array that was at Westwood, is that not operational now? I just heard you just mention that.
The panels are coming down.
Because of the construction?
Because of the construction. They'll be stored. And then once the project is completed to the point that they can be reinstalled, they'll be reinstalled. And then the amount of time that they're off the roof, the lease will be extended that period of time. So if they're off for?
Five months, 12 months, whatever.
Exactly, yes. And as, as Mr. Relo mentioned, there is a period of time where the contract terminates and the panels become owned by the district. So the good news is with Westwood, it sounds like they may be giving us new panels and upgrading the panels. So they'll have, have less, less life on them when they become ours.
Less life with new panels?
Yeah, the panels that are coming down, it sounds like they're replacing them with new panels.
So wouldn't they have longer life?
So they'll, they won't?
Have a longer life but a lesser lease period?
Well, the lease period will be the same, but the panels will be new. So they won't, they won't have all those years of use on them when they become ours.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
My question is, is when you have a, a building that's empty like that, what are the costs associated with it? Are there any cost?
With Terwilliger?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Like Terwilliger that's there, are we putting any money into that school? We're obviously not running the HVAC, right? But are there any cost?
So I think, and, and I'm not sure if Glenn wants to jump in here or not, Mr. Molender. But you know, there are costs associated with, with an unoccupied building. We live in Florida, so just turning the AC completely off is, could be very problematic. It's an attractive nuisance. There's lawn maintenance that needs to be done. And, and our facilities that we plan to reuse, and I'll use, I guess, purview probably is a pretty good example. We keep a staff member there and it was the same way with Duval before we had all the tenants. Because you really do have to have someone on site to make sure, you know, alarms are set, it's secure. They're not necessarily doing the same cleaning they would as if it was occupied. But we need someone physically in that building for security purposes and just in general to make sure everything, there's no leaks or any kind of issues that would arise. So there are certainly, operating costs are significantly less than it would be if they're occupied. But there, we do have to maintain, you know, ambient temperature and things of that nature.
Yeah, I, thanks for that. I just didn't know if we were, if they were just being left to... Thank you.
Well, I think there, you know, the way I look at it is they're an asset to be protected whether they're occupied or not. You know, so those are the things that go into protecting the asset that we have.
Mr. Molender, did you have something else you want to add?
Yes ma'am. So, Mr. Relo, the air condition has been turned off at Terwilliger completely. Because we don't have a staff member there, we've had unwanted tenants show up.
Ooh.
They busted the windows out of the place. And vandalized. GPD was just there earlier this week. Somebody, you know, broke in and spray painted a bunch of stuff all over the walls and everything. So we have one in there and turned all of the HVAC off because it's just blowing out in the outside air because the windows are gone. We are, the electric's still turned on, so we still do have that cost. Obviously, it's a lot less since we don't have any HVAC on.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Nguyen?
So I guess my question to you is, do, do you, if I could get some feedback on holding the, does it make sense to hold the Terwilliger Castaldi? Would you like me to move forward with that?
I'll start first, well, I'll start with my colleagues. Ms. Dr. McNally will start from, with you and come down if you want to give Ms. Nguyen some feedback.
I think that it would be best, in my opinion, to, although we're pausing, but to hold off on anything until we can have some more discussion, especially with the outcome of the Castaldi and what, what, what figures. And we have not even had an opportunity as this board to decide selling or doing something similar to what we're doing in East Gainesville with the property of Duval. At least I have not had discussion with anyone. So I'm at the point where I think that I'd like to, if we're pausing it, and get information later. Because certainly we have some other criteria, as you stated earlier, about Hawthorne Middle High. And so we don't want to stop any of that progress. And if it's, if you're saying you have to have information in by February, is that what I heard you say?
I, I think it's more a matter of spending the money on the Castaldi when we may not need it, really, is, is the bottom line. It's not a matter of we don't, we can't do it. We can keep it moving. It's, do we want to keep it moving if we may not need it and spend that money?
I have a hard time in saying we may not need it. I, and if we were thinking about profit in selling, then, you know, there are a lot of other questions that would come up at that time as well. But I'm very conservative sometimes. And this is one time that I feel connected. When I heard 10,000 for the Castaldi, when I know what we just did with, what do you call it? Retention pond for 10,000 over at that other school, I'm thinking 10,000 is really not that much to me for Castaldi if we are paying 10,000 to do, what's the pond called? The retention, the retention pond. I, I heard that amount that we had to do for that facility. So 10,000 may seem like a lot, but after I heard what we had to pay to get that work done?
Okay.
Okay? Did that give an answer, Madam Chair, or?
I heard you say go forth, go, go forward.
Okay.
And I can tell you that part, part of the work has already been done. So it's not the complete 10,000 that would, that would be held. So it's even less than 10,000 because part of the investigative work has already been completed.
Dr. Rockwell?
So given the update we just got that the property has been vandalized, has windows damaged, has no air conditioning, it doesn't, it doesn't sound like there's, any part of that structure could be used by anyone for anything. It's going to be full of mold. So, you know, I was initially thinking, okay, yes, let's hold off on the Castaldi because someone who might purchase the property might want to invest in those buildings. They might, like, it might make sense to sell as is. But if they are moldy buildings with no windows and spray paint on them, I can't imagine that happening. But I do want to make sure that we're prioritizing buildings that currently have students. So, you know, I definitely want us to make sure that we focus on the Castaldi for Hawthorne Middle High School before we start this one.
The Castaldi doesn't matter to me one way or another. I mean, I, I say just put a pause on Turwilleger. But I am concerned about the vandalism. And, and I feel like, you know, like Mr. Rela was saying, you know, maybe we need someone assigned there at least to check on that place every day. Because it's just going to get in worse, in worse disrepair. And, but I don't think, I don't think we know what we want to do with that property. And I think a lot of it's going to have to do with what we do with rezoning. And so I think we just need to pause on it personally.
All right, and I, I sort of, I agree with Ms. Abbott. But one of the things, I wish we would have someone over there on a regular basis since it's being vandalized. Because we're not sure yet. But based on the needs for our children, I'm not ready to say sell it either. You know, we want to make sure Hawthorne, because Hawthorne definitely needs priority. But if you've already done part of the work, I'm okay if you move forward as well, since you've already done part of it. But based on the needs, especially I'm concerned about, you know, discipline issues. We don't know where, but how we, but we got to make sure we serve our children. So I'm not ready to sell it. But I do think that you, we need to move forward with the information. But I want Hawthorne first, because I know Hawthorne has been waiting, but if you've already done it. But I would like to know, because about the vandalism, is it the whole or just a portion of the school? Or how much of it has had the vandalism in the windows and those things?
It's not the whole school.
Right.
Building four right now is the one that GPD was in earlier this week. The front office and the cafeteria have also been broken into.
Have we cut the grass and stuff? Have we?
We're not cutting it on, we don't have a lawn care contract with anyone. Our grounds department goes over there periodically and mows it.
Okay, all right, but hopefully that helps you answer for me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm, I am for pausing with Turwilleger, but I was going to suggest that we do, and I've mentioned this to Mr. Rela about us cutting the yard. At least cut it so it doesn't look like it's vagrant, you know, like it's just abandoned piece of property. But I do think we, I, I'm of the mindset of us pausing with it and proceeding with the Castaldi and getting Hawthorne and the other projects that we have in the hopper done. And then maybe some things will be kind of sorted out and we can start addressing some other, making some priorities as a board because we've got so many new members here, building up their knowledge base and, and assessing things before we just act harshly.
So I'm hearing, and I heard this during the orientation, that Hawthorne was the priority and that was something that I acted on after the orientation. So that is happening first. And I'm hearing you say, continue on with the Castaldi for old Turwilleger. And just so you know, it's, doing the Castaldi would not just be applicable in the event that you sell.
Right.
If you look at keeping the property and reusing, it would be useful for that as well. So, and we'll, we'll put that next in line after Hawthorne. Does that sound accurate?
That does.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next. So now we're, we're on to the Littlewood redevelopment design capacity and the getting, which is going to be leading into the scope for Littlewood. Right now at Littlewood Elementary, we have 13 portables that have taken over the playfields and, and really reduced the play space for children. We have seven that are owned, six that are leased. The amount of money that we spend per year is, for the leased portables, is a little over $35,000. The enrollment has fluctuated between 655 and 734 in the past six years. And using November 8th figures, we have a permanent capacity, which is the permanent buildings excluding the portables of 588. We had 713 students zoned. We had 146 zoned students not attending and we had 131 zoning exceptions. Rezoning, I just wanted to point out, rezoning does not solve the issue of zoning exceptions. Just, you know, to, to kind of distinguish between those things. The enrollment was 698. So I believe for various reasons, we should target designing for the current enrollment of around 698. I know that I've talked about not increasing capacity when we have capacity available. But in this instance, it makes sense because minimally, we would have to increase the size of dining, which I've talked to Ms. Eunice about. We'd have to do some reconfiguring of the parent drop-off area to solve some traffic issues. But overall, you're not talking about a huge investment in increasing core facilities. And there is operational cost efficiency that Mr. Rela has spoken to previously. This would accommodate the zoned students attending and the zoning exceptions. And it would accommodate the district ESE self-contained program. So we do have a, a district program there at that school. That's what I would recommend. That's what I've talked to Superintendent Andrew about. And that seems to make the most sense. Next. So if we're targeting, looking at that capacity, everything that you see in red up there would be demolished. So those are all classroom buildings with the exception of the media center. The media center is, is in good condition. You know, so that's something that I'm looking at not eliminating. If we take all those buildings out and we remove portables, we could create, like we've done with previous redevelopment projects, we could create a nice internal circulation for the school, which is really important for safety and security. Next. So basically the scope that we have right now, that I really appreciate your feedback on, involves eliminating the portables and restoring the playfields and playgrounds, demolishing eight classroom skills labs buildings and replacing them with new construction, renovating the media center and multipurpose area, ESE and music classrooms, expanding the food service dining area minimally. And as I mentioned, I, I spoke with Ms. Eunice about that and, and what area, how much area that would entail. Redesigning parking and parent pickup and drop-off loop for staging so we can have a safer... You know, a lot of traffic in those areas creates a real safety hazard for our students. You know, so looking at what we've, when we've done redevelopment, like with Idewile, we look at staging to create more onsite areas for vehicles to be during those times. Evaluate the condition and needs of the existing remaining HVAC systems and the utility infrastructure. Some of that is very, very old, designed to remeet, to meet the requirement for what we need to replace or renovate. And then as we've done with our schools like Metcalf, we're doing with Westwood, Howard Bishop, we, we create a Sallyport in the front office where there's a safe area that's secured for people, the public to come in, but they're in a secured area before they're, they can enter into our school. So have some redesign of that front office area. Next. This is the proposed schedule. Right now we're out on the streets for the architect, for the design services for this project. The construction delivery method that I'd really like feedback on as well, that this schedule is built upon, is doing a hard bid like we've done with, that we, we changed to with, with Westwood and not doing a CM at risk, GMP. But I really would like feedback on that and your thoughts on that. With the current environment, I, I can tell you that a lot of school districts are looking at going to hard bid because they're getting very high prices with GMPs in this economy and environment. But as I mentioned, I would like to hear your thoughts on that. So on November 29th, our architect submissions were received. We received nine. So it was a very good response. We have a selection committee that are reviewing those submissions. We'll be doing a, a shortlist. And after we do a shortlist, we'll do interviews. We will rescore them based on the interviews and we'll bring the ranking to you in March. April will start the design. April 24, in 2024, the bid set will be complete and then we'll go to bidding, bring the bid to the board for approval. And then the summer of 2024, we're looking at moving the Westwood school back to their home and moving Littlewood to the transition school. So that will be a busy summer. And so we, we've moved quite a few schools over a summer, but never have we exited and entered a school into the same transition space. So that, that'll be interesting. The June of 2024 through August of 2025, I have scheduled for new construction and renovation and then return to the school in the school year 25, 26. So, next. So it, I would, I would love to hear feedback, thoughts. You know, one thing that I, I do need in order to get a contract, you know, once we go through this selection process, we bring the ranking of the architect to you. We negotiate a contract with the first ranked architect. And at that point, that's when I need to be clear on what our scope is so we know, you know, how to negotiate that, that contract and that work. So...
Okay, so she's open for questions now, but I want to make sure I, that, I heard that you needed two things, two guidance on, two things from us, correct? One being bid type, if we want to do CM or GM risk or hard bid. And the other is the enrollment capacity, if we want to go forth with current enrollment, with the current, what the current enrollment is now. I put several, 700 down. He said 698, I think. Was there a third thing that you need a guidance on or just those two items?
I think those two things, the enrollment wraps into the scope. You know, so I think it starts with the capacity. What, what capacity are we designing for? And then are there any alterations to the scope I proposed, would you suggest? And then if we're going hard bid versus GMP, that, or vice versa, that could alter the schedule. The schedule that I provided to you in this presentation is if we go hard bid. If we go GMP, we're, we bring the contractor in a lot sooner. So if we're going to be doing that route, we're going to have to start advertising soon and going through the same process we're doing with the architects, with contractors, qualify, you know, basically select on qualifications and then bring them into the design process early on.
But we kind of decided to do hard bid with Westwood because the GMP prices were so much, they, they kind of blew up through the roof, correct? Am I recalling correctly, right?
That is correct and that's what I'm hearing around the state.
Right, okay. So Dr. McNeil has, has, we'll start with her.
You kind of, you kind of answered when you and Ms. Surtin were talking about hard bid versus GMP. I don't, I have no earthly idea of what you're talking about and not embarrassed by saying that. But what I do know is that while away at the conference last week, I met with a group of contractors. So I think I heard you say, if you go GMP, whatever that stands for, you would have to get right on that as you're doing with submissions for, for the architect. So because I'm concerned as to how you go about or how we have developed in the past for construction purposes, I'm very interested in knowing the difference between hard bid and GMP. I don't know if you have time to share that with me. What's GMP?
The GMP is guaranteed maximum price.
Oh, okay.
It's one of the construction delivery methods. And when we do a GM, when we, when we go that route, we qualify contractors based on qualifications.
Okay.
So when we do a hard bid though, we, we get to the point where we have a complete design set of plans and then we have a competitive bidding process. For multiple, so the plans are put out and multiple contractors bid and we, we select only on price at that point, not qualifications. I mean, there is a, a pre-qualification that they're able to do the work.
Okay. I think I understood what you were explaining between the two. But my preference would be for different construction companies having an opportunity to bid. And I'm thinking about the company that we met with while at convention. So I don't know if they would fall under hard bid or the guaranteed maximum price. I don't know, because I guess that would be something I would have to call and try to find out what's the best.
They could, they could participate in either process.
In, in either process. Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Dr. Rockwell, go ahead.
So I agree with the scope of the project. I think that we do need to build for the current enrollment. If, my preference would be to build for more than that, but I don't know if we're even allowed because Gainesville just keeps growing. And so having capacity now doesn't mean having capacity in two years when this project is completed. But, but I agree with not limiting the scope to the current capacity, but increasing it. So... In terms of the hard bid versus GMP, I understand that the hard bid will bring costs down and that's very important. But what I want to make sure of, when they do that hard bid and they bid on the cost, do we get like details on materials quality? Like are there guaranteed minimums on what materials they use? Or could we have a potential problem where, you know, they put in the cheapest possible linoleum and five years later, we're having to replace it?
That's all, that's all outlined and detailed in our plans and specifications. So that, that is what they're bidding on, those specific design plans and specs.
Okay, perfect. Then I have, then, then I'm all for the hard bid, so long as we know that we have guaranteed quality.
And we do have district design specifications that we give to our design professionals. And that is something that is incorporated into the design from the get-go. If there's any requests for substitutions, it has to be vetted with... If there's any requests for substitutions, it has to be vetted with the design team and the school board staff.
And I'm assuming that would be in a situation like when we had the door shortage and we had to substitute out.
We, they have to come, they have to go through a process to have it approved as a substitution.
Is Dr. Rock, are you done? Okay.
I think we should design for current enrollment. And I go with the hard bid also.
I go with hard bid, but with the bid, is that process still the same when you're looking at it minority participation, getting points for that? I know I talked about that before.
That's not something that we can specify during a hard bid. It's based on, are they able to do the work? We pre-qualify whether they're able to do the work and then it's, it's totally based on cost at that point.
But it's the same committee that will be looking at it, the bids that come in?
There's, it's, it's not really a committee at that point because we're not selecting based on qualifications. It's strictly based on how the numbers come in.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I know Dr. McNeely alluded to, we just want to make sure we are giving people opportunities to do some of these other, other projects. And I'm okay with current enrollment.
One thing that we've done, I don't know, Mr. L, if you want to speak to this or not, about our task order contractors and in expanding the opportunities, you know, that we've offered with task order contracts and adding in our fifth tier of two to four million, that's, that's something that we've been working with finance on expand, or purchasing on doing task order contracting and getting more contractors on board to allow for those opportunities for small minority women, veteran businesses. And that was something we just went out and, and offered. If, if a company had been in business and they were qualified for, say, tier one or two, and then now they have the ability to bond for larger projects, we went and kind of opened it up again to see if, if they did qualify, we, we qualified them for higher level task orders. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I don't know if you have anything to add? No, good. So that's something we're aware of and something that we've been working on with, with purchasing.
I had a question about the ESE self-contained classrooms. Are, is that capacity staying the same? You know, we've had, the board has had a few citizens come in and say that we need to build and have more capacity in Westwood instead of just at Sidney, so that their students are not on the bus so long?
That is something that, we, we heard those comments when we were designing Terwilliger. And that was something we incorporated into the design in that school. I, I think, Ms. Wise, if you have anything to add, I don't know if, one thing that we do early on with the architect when we're doing design is we have internal stakeholder meetings with all of the, all of our, our departments to get feedback. So if there was a plan to expand that program, that's where we would hear about that. But I'll, I'll, Ms. Wise, speak to that as well.
I mean, I understand that Terwilliger in the design phase was specifically designed to hold district program classes to provide an opportunity in the western area of the county. I don't, it's not always exclusively a choice of Lanier or the district program at Littlewood, for instance. But I definitely see the value in having special district program classes in areas that are accessible to families in all areas. So I am not 100% sure that there is a district program class operating right now at Terwilliger, but that space does exist. And I would think there will continue to be demand for there to be a district program class at Littlewood as well. For, even though it's not geographically that far from Lanier, I think there would still be demand for it.
So the space to, to kind of sum that up, the space was, we did hear from the parents. I, I remember a board meeting where, where they were speaking to that, where it took them too long if there was a medical emergency to get across town to their children. So we did hear that. We did design the space at Terwilliger to accommodate that. So that's something that we would look at doing at Littlewood as well. Does that answer your question?
You just touched on it there. You said you're gonna, you would look into it. I was wondering if that's had already been incorporated, but, so.
We always meet with all of our internal stakeholders, with chief of security, you know, with, with everybody basically to get feedback for what do we need to look at as we're, as we're doing design? What are the needs for the programs, for what's happening in the buildings?
All right, so I think we're, it seems that there's consensus on going forth with current enrollment, about 700 students and to be hard bidding to try to conserve our resources, to be good stewards of what we have, it seems.
Okay.
Madam Chair, certain, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Just one comment on the enrollment, and I've heard that to, to go with current enrollment. If we look at their fluctuation there from 655 to 734, we may want to consider, I know current enrollment is 698, perhaps it's worthy of consideration around 750. I could be wrong, but I do know when we build new schools, particularly like if we look at Howard Bishop, we saw some enrollment increases there. More people sometimes move back into the neighborhood. Some families may come in and buy some of those homes where the college students are living and push some folks out of there. I don't know that, but particularly with you having a new build at Westwood and one there at Littlewood, families may be drawn back into that area, just like we're seeing over the Metcalf area with having Metcalf and Howard Bishop there. So just for consideration, I thought I'd put that out there.
Not unreasonable. I, I mean, with putting in with what we already have that's in the vicinity, I don't know. I mean, and cost-wise, I don't know how much an additional 50 student stations would be when you.
That would be approximately two additional classrooms.
Yeah.
And while we have the contractor on site and mobilized, it, it would make sense.
Yeah, I, I think that makes a lot of sense, especially since we don't really have another elementary school kind of in that central 34th Street area now that old Terwilliger is closed. So if people do start moving back to the area, we don't have anywhere to share that burden.
Great, I'll target that.
Mr. Delaney?
Not strictly a legal issue, but just sort of district history. I recall there being some frustration when we opened Meadowbrook and within two years, we had a substantial number of portables there. So that may be something that the board wants to consider, and particularly given that there's more than 100 students who are zoned currently for Littlewood. That may change. Rather than maybe new families moving in with this new era that public schools are supposed to compete with vouchers, I, I think it would be easier to transition students out of using a voucher or attending a private school or something like that and immediately wanting to try out a, a brand-new facility. So there may be an influx just from that without even having families moving in.
I'm, I'm cautious in going at 800. Because, no, no, I, I heard 750 from our superintendent, but I, I, the comment I was taking from what I, maybe I was reading more into what the legal said, but, and that the school would fill up because we had 131 students that are zoned that are not attending the school. And so if they came back and we're at, it's at six, six, 700 now, that'd be 831 if, if everybody came back, or we say 800 if everybody came back, an extra hundred. So if we came in at 750 from day one, Littlewood rebuild would be over capacity like Meadowbrook was when it first opened. But I'm cautious about building so new because we have so much capacity. Metcalf was built larger. And then we have Rollins that's less than two miles away. And so I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure how you guys feel about it. I'm, I, I can swallow 750 in that range there. I'm, I don't want it to creep up in the scope and we build a, because I think that would have a negative impact on existing buildings that we already have and trying to fill them. People would want to be trying to get into, into that school. Or, you know, and Parker's going to be rebuilt pretty soon. It's in, it's in the calendar to come up and so the, we'll have the same kind of thought process with Parker. And I think doing that would, again, negatively, could negatively impact the enrollment of a school that we just rebuilt, Metcalf. You know, as well as an existing building in Rollins that's there, so. So I think we've, we've.
If there's intention to rezone.
There is, there is, there's, yeah.
So there's that as well. And, you know, keep in mind that this school is, is targeted for 25, 26.
Correct.
There's that, and that could be looked at during the process of rezoning as well.
So Ms. Nguyen, I, I think you've heard from us, and I tried to keep a tick of the, the, what you needed, scope of work and the type of bid. And I think we covered that.
You did.
Do you have what you need?
Very well. I feel like I have clear direction, absolutely. So thank you very much. Are there any other questions, comments that I can answer, address?
Anyone else have any comments or any questions for Ms. Nguyen? Good of the order.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. So that, that concludes our facilities update, the work with Ms. Nguyen. Our next group is teaching and learning. We had a, for our new colleagues, we had a presentation by this group, I want to say May, I didn't write down the date because I, I mean, I didn't bring the papers with me, but I think it was in May. Is that around May where they came to us and told us the existing programs that they have and gave, shared a little bit of data and program expansion and some requests from us for, they were asking for some additional units to be able to evaluate more kids so they could serve them. And I guess it would potentially be with pre-K ESE as well as in the VpreK. But we'll let them get going and welcome Ms. Hutchinson and Ms. Dell.
Hi, I'm Nanette Dell. I'm the executive director of elementary curriculum. And with me today, we have Ms. Hutchinson. She is our pre-K ESE partner in the programs that we have for our VPK programs. And I also want to introduce the VPK staff because they are the brains and truly the heart of the program. And they're back here. Tricia Nieves is doing the PowerPoint. We have Jerry Richardson and Diamond Jordan. And they are the ones who do the hard work every day, even down to substituting in classrooms when we are short on subs. So they're an amazing team. So we want to get started and we did do a presentation back in May, I believe it was. And some of this is going to be a little bit of a repeat for Ms., for Mrs. Surtin and Dr. McNeely, but we want to make sure that our new board members are aware of the program and what we have. So in our, in our program, we have three different kinds of pre-K programs here. We have the VPK blended program, which is the VPK instructor and a para that's funded by our ESE department with, and that has, our goal in enrollment is 14 voluntary pre-K students and six ESE students. In the ESE blended model, it is the ESE certified teacher and there is an ESE para and the enrollment should be about 12 ESE students and six VPK students. And then we have pre-K ESE self-contained, which is the ESE teacher and the ESE para, and all of those students are students with IEPs. And the enrollment there is 12, which sometimes near the end of the year, it does grow because students can be in, placed in those classrooms all throughout the year. And so we want to talk about why it's important for inclusion. And I, you all know that, you know, fully included VPK students, we have those two models, and children with and without disabilities benefit from those inclusive settings. The, the students with disabilities have peer models, students without disabilities all stern, they learn to, to accept everyone. And so we value this blended model and we think that the children learn and grow every day from this. And we want to provide the least restrictive environment for our students with disabilities who have an IEP where appropriate. And we want to talk a little bit about eligibility. Our pre-K ESE program, Mrs. Hutchinson is going to talk about eligibility for our pre-K ESE students.
Good afternoon. As it relates to our program eligibility, so the first step in referral for our pre-K ESE program is going through the child fine process with Fiddler's. And so referrals can go to child fine from pediatricians, daycares, parents. And so what happens, those referrals go to Fiddler's, child fine, and then they review those packets. Some students are what we call our Part C students, they are in early steps. And students in early steps are receiving services from birth to age three through early steps. And then they transition, they can transition, we have transition meetings, and they can transition into our program prior to their third birthday. We're mandated to evaluate and staff prior to their third birthday for those Part C students. Our students who we are our Part B students are community referrals that come to us from Fiddler's. And for those students, we do our best to try to evaluate prior to their third birthday, but we're not obligated necessarily to evaluate prior to the third birthday. So we work towards evaluating the Part C first and then we work in our Part B students for, those referrals for evaluations and staffings. We conduct the evaluations. The evaluation is conducted by our multidisciplinary team, which consists of our psychologists, speech-language pathologists, and then we have Ms. Hill from Fiddler's that also assists us with evaluations as well. And our evaluations occur year-round because it's based upon children's third birthday. So we're constantly evaluating all throughout the year. And so students are, it's a roll-in enrollment because it's based upon the third birthday. So oftentimes, we start a year with less students in our classes and as the year progresses, those numbers increase. And then after the evaluation, about two weeks later, we have the staffing where we go over the results of the evaluation with the parents, the families, and then determine if they meet the criteria for the development of an IEP. And then once an IEP has been written, if the child is three, then they may enter our program. They are not obligated to enter, just because we evaluate and staff, families are not obligated to enter our pre-K ESE program. Episcopal Children's Services Head Start has a requirement of 10% of their students have to have an IEP. The only way to get an IEP for children ages three through five in Alachua County is coming through us. That is the only way that IEPs are developed because through child fine state requirements, we have to evaluate those students. So the only way is through those referrals, through Fiddler's, and we conduct the evaluation. So as I stated, 10% of their students have to have an IEP. So oftentimes, some students will evaluate, but they do not necessarily enter our program. And then just real quick, backtracking, I do want to say, the previous slide that talked about inclusion, we do have a state indicator that we have to make sure that we're being noted for inclusion. So I think about two years ago, we were at 12% because we did not, we had a fully self-contained pre-K ESE program. With the implementation of our VPK, that indicator has increased our percentage, but we're not at the goal, which I believe is around 50, 60 something percent for the state of Florida. So we are far from the goal, but we are moving in the right direction with the implementation of our VPK program and having the inclusive settings for our pre-K children. of our V P K program and having the inclusive settings for our pre-K children.
I was going to say, if you have questions along the way, please ask. So, Dr. Rockwell.
I actually have a couple. Since we enroll our E S E pre-K students when they turn three as required by I D E A, but V P K is a four-year-old program, do, do we include three-year-olds into there?
So for our program, because with, for the blended classes, with our pre-K E S E blended classes, which the majority of them are, we have spots for V P K students. Those are our pre-K E S E teachers. We try to keep the allocation, twelve E S E students, at least six V P K students. But because of our need as it relates to the number of E S E students that we have, we do have some three-year-olds in those pre-K E S E blended classes, but what we do is we look at the need of the child and if they can handle being in that class. So it's usually our older three-year-olds who may not have as significant, but some of them do, because we have a great need that is occurring within our, our district as it relates to students with disabilities in that age range that are coming through. And so, yes, we do have three-year-olds in those pre-K E S E blended classes, not in our V P K blended classes. The classes that are the V P K blended, blended classes, those are not, are, are not necessarily certified instructors. And so, and for V P K, they need to be four, they need to have the voucher. And so we don't have three-year-olds in the V P K blended classes, but yes, we do in the pre-K E S E blended classes.
And then, I don't know if you'll know the answer to this or if I can, I can reach out to Julie at Children's Episcopal Services if not, but do, does Head Start take three-year-olds in their ten percent? Or, I'm basically asking, are we serving all the three-year-olds?
So I can tell you, we're not serving all the three-year-olds because some go private.
Right.
Some do go to Episcopal. With Episcopal, they, for their V P K classes, it's four-year-olds, but they do provide services because they also have early Head Start.
Okay.
So yes, they do service some three-year-olds as well because they have early Head Start.
And then my-
Give me just a second, Ms. Rockwell, Dr. Rockwell. Ms. Hutchinson, would you slide your mic over because you're going in and out your audio, like maybe slide it in for, just because I'm sure we'll get the, that your audio is going in and out. Thank you.
My last question, I was looking at the enrollments and so I noticed that for V P K, if it was a fully V P K class, we would require a teacher and aide for twenty students. Now we're putting E S E students in there and keeping the enrollment numbers the same without a certified teacher in there. I know we don't have many units like that. I, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but I want us to keep a really close eye on those classrooms and how they're functioning and making sure those paras get extra support and professional development because having been a pre-K E S E teacher who had seventeen children in my self-contained class with two paras, it was, it was nightmarish at times, like just the number of different needs you're trying to juggle in a small space, positioning equipment in a small space. And I know you probably don't have all of those things, but I just, that's something I want to keep a close eye on.
And, and we do, I regularly, weekly, monitor our enrollment numbers. Ms. Nieves and the V P K team monitor as well, go out to the sites and visit the sites. We do have some sites for pre-K E S E where we are above sixteen or more children. And so what we're looking at is once we get to fourteen and look at the makeup of the class, then we do look at an additional allocation of a para so that we have that additional support and, and it kind of helps with the ratio of adult to children because we're dealing with young people with learning disabilities. And so we are aware of that and we're constantly monitoring those numbers.
And just to speak to, I know we've talked about the V P K blended classrooms. Yes, they do have to be four to be in those E S E students or just at the V P K students. And what is a good partnership is looking at, at this time of year, looking at our students in these E S E self-contained classes that are three, that would be good candidates to move into a blended setting, whether it be V P K blended or E S E blended. And so we, you know, that's a partnership that we have with, with Mrs. Hutchinson to make sure that we're evaluating those students and moving them into the right position, in classrooms.
I mean, I definitely appreciate that we have this option now because you know my daughter, she would have thrived in that option.
Abs- absolutely, absolutely. And I would have loved to have had that, that opportunity and I, we have that oppor- they have that opportunity at Talbot as well now. But in terms of our V P K eligibility, there is the age requirement. That's part of the state requirement. You have to, the students have to be four on or before September first. And there is no income requirement, like in some programs, but this, there is no income requirement for V P K eligibility. Families apply online at the V P K program by completing a short Google form and they are time and date stamped. The applications are accepted on a first-come, first-served basis because there are really no other, there are no other requirements other than being four on or before September first. We do give priority to our zoned students because we want that extra year with those students in those schools. And we also, other than maybe employees, if a teacher has a child at the school or a para or bus drivers or cafeteria workers, they have opportunities to go to a school where their child, where they are working. And we can, and the families can apply for any location. We would consider, if they don't have a V P K site at their school, putting them in another site, but we have such an overwhelming demand and many sites that there's a waiting list at most. We're going to go through our enrollment and just in V P K programs, what we have. During the school year, there, there are two options. There is a V P K School Year Program. It's five hundred and forty hours. It's a V P K instructor and one assistant or in the cases of the E S E, you know, we have the E S E blended model, those students are in, into the V P K students there. In a V P K, just regular V P K classroom, there could be up to twenty students. And then we also have a summer program, which is three hundred hours and one teacher and up to twelve students. And there is a requirement that there be one V P K program in the district, at least one. And so we have, families can use the voucher either for the School Year Program or for the Summer Program. And so if a student is in a V P K blended classroom, you know, in a, in an E S E blended classroom and they are an E S E student in that class, they could use their V P K voucher if they had one for the summer to extend their learning. So that is what is, is very beneficial. So those students could use, could have V P K or E S E blended classroom during the school year and then use their voucher during the summer. And the public school has been the only summer V P K provider in Alachua County for the summer of twenty twenty-one. This past year, we had, it was held prior that we had Caring and Sharing, the Public Charter School that did it, but this past year, we had it at Rawlings. And during the summer, there are little different requirements for the teachers. The V P K teacher during the school year has to have a C D A, but the teacher must have, be certified or have a bachelor's degree or early, in early childhood, pre-K, primary education, family and consumer science, or must have a bachelor's degree in elementary education with a certification to teach birth to sixth grade. That's for the summer program. There are, you know, greater certification requirements. At this time, A C P S, we, we do offer a full-day program. However, the voucher that we receive from V P K for the V P K students in the V P K blended classes and the E S E blended classes is for a half a day. The five hundred and forty hours, it funds three hours per day, but we choose to, to do the program for the, the full day. And, and the rationale is that, you know, the children need that time to prepare. We need that time with our students to give them the best start in school. And some of the cons and some of the problems with a, just a short half-day program, sometimes it's hard to find staff that wants to work part of the day. Families that have working, you know, the families that are working, they need a full-day program so that their students can have that education during the time. And we feel that it doesn't really, five hundred and forty hours might not prepare students for the rigor of kindergarten. Kindergarten is not the kindergarten of old, not the kindergarten back in my day. Kindergarten is, you know, there are a lot higher, greater expectations that they have to reach. So getting our students in these classrooms early and supporting them is, is what, the reason that we want to do this.
Ms. Dell, can I stop? So I don't know who's going to get this question, but I'm going to put this out there because I've asked it like three times this year.
Mm-hmm.
What you just said, it's a half-day program, we don't get the voucher, how are we paying for that?
And that, we're going to be addressing that in the, in the PowerPoint and we're going to explain the different models and how some of it's funded. And this, this slide, the next slide is really just more about our V P K Summer Program. It gives a little more specific information about the qualifications for the Summer Program being higher, that there can only be a max of twelve students. And we actually, the, the model can be, you can have the one teacher, but we do think that it's better to have two people in the classroom during the summer. And it is a long program, especially if there's a shorter summer to fit the, the number of hours needed for the Summer Program. So some, our, last summer, our V P K program was starting at Tricia's seven-thirty and went to five-thirty. It was, it was a long day because we have to make sure that we have the correct amount of hours. And like I said, last year, we had a program at Rawlings. We would like to look forward and then consider having another program, maybe in the west at Toowiliger and that area, to provide a summer program for students in our west side. The next slide just kind of shows you the history of when, you know, the school year of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and this year, where we had programs. Essentially, we have the same number of classes. They might be a little different. In twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we had self-contained, there were seventeen pre-K E S E self-contained classes, seven blended pre-K E S E classes and four V P K blended classes. This, this year, we have fourteen pre-K E S E self-contained classes, seven pre-K E S E blended classes and seven V P K blended. So essentially, same number of classes, just configured a different way based on needs and school sites. This, the next slide shows you the number of applicants that we've had for V P K. It shows you what, how many we've had, how many are on the waitlist. We've had, for a V P K blended, right now, accepted and enrolled, there are ninety-three, but there are seventy-three that have applied and that are on, I mean, seventy-five that are on a waitlist. In our E S E blended, there are sixty-six enrolled and ninety-seven that are on a waitlist. And then we have, we have applications for V P K because they come in on a Google form, parents apply, even though that might not, their school might not be listed. We have a hundred and, let's see, no, a hundred and sixty-eight that have applied at schools where we don't have a V P K site. And then it's broken down by each of those schools in the chart below. We'll show you that we didn't, we don't, we don't have V P K classes at those sites and the number that applied this past year. And just to give you a little more information in terms of waiting lists that we have for schools where we do have V P K. In our V P K blended schools, at Archer, we have, you know, ten on a waiting list. Newberry, we have fourteen. At Wiles, there were thirty-five students on a waiting list and at Toowiliger, ten. And in our E S E blended, at Erby, we have a waitlist of twenty-two students. Norton has a waitlist of twenty students. Rawlings, fifteen. Lake Forest, twelve, and Talbot has a waitlist of twenty-five students. So, kind of gives you an idea of the, the popularity and the, you know, the need for this program.
Can I ask some questions before you get into the budget?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. I'm kind of curious, all the kids that have I E Ps, are those mainly for DD? Are there other disabilities that are identified?
The majority are DD, but we'd have other disabilities that are identified as well. We have some students who are walk-in, speech-only. We have some with language impairments, deaf, hard of hearing, other health impairments. Impairments, it's a wide range, but the majority are DD and then they may have a secondary.
That's awesome, getting that speech and language at that early of an age. And then my, another question was, what's the attendance like for these programs? You know, there are issues in our K through twelve schools with attendance. Is it better in these programs?
For, for pre-K E S E, yes, our children, for the more, most part, they're in attendance. One of the things with our pre-K E S E program is that they can have a modified week. So some students may attend just two days a week because some have other therapies and things, but one of the things that is emphasized is if it's a modified week, say a child attends Tuesdays and Thursdays, it has to be that same day every week. And so our parents are very consistent in getting their children to school for our pre-K E S E students. And I know with V P K as well, there are some attendance requirements for V P K, federal requirements. So yes, they do attend because they could be dismissed from V P K. They could lose their voucher if they're not in attendance. So yes, they do, our students do attend in our pre-K programs.
That's awesome. And then my last question is, is what determines where a VP program will be held? Why is it held at certain schools and not others?
So I was, Ms. Nieves and myself were part of the initial planning to incorporate V P K. And one of the things that we looked at, at that time, we had Head Start as well and they had done an analysis on need. And so we looked at that, we looked at growth in the community, we looked at enrollment in schools, we looked at where daycares were currently in place. And at that time, it was based upon needs. What we look at now, we meet and we discuss where we, we look at these numbers, where we have waitlists. We look at the numbers with pre-K E S E as well and look at, and make those decisions, those recommendations based upon all of that information that we gather. So we try to look at the data that we have and make a determination based upon the data.
And I guess my only thought on that is that our S I schools, how valuable it would be to have a V P K program. And I see Idiwild has like forty-eight on a, on a waitlist, so.
And, and I was going to speak to that as well. Some of it is also capacity within the school to have a space for the program. And last year, at Idiwild, we did have a blended model there, but with the move to their new building and some of the students being rezoned to Metcalf because of capacity, we weren't sure that there was the physical space at Idiwild for that. And so that's why, and, and there was also a great need for the students to have pre-K E S E space there, so we didn't have that space. But that's, looking at some of the places that have waiting lists, it also may be a space issue at the school. Do they have a room? Do they have a portable? There are some spaces, for example, I know at Erby, the principal just said that, you know, she has, she has space, she has some portables, but, you know, it's again, having the teachers, the pairs and the funding to do that.
Thank you.
Our next slide just talks about the funding, the School Year Program and the, the Summer Program and how we are funded based on that. And it explains, you know, how much the, that we get per child for each of those programs. For the Summer Program, it turned, the voucher comes back at thirty-three hundred dollars, a little over thirty-three hundred dollars per child for the Summer Program because we are reimbursed at a greater rate during the summer. And then for the School Year Program, it's twenty-eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars per child. And the monthly funding reimbursement for V P K is based on enrollment and attendance. As Ms., Mrs. Hutchinson said, there are requirements. And I will say that Mrs., Mrs. Nieves and Mrs. Richardson do an amazing job monitoring, working and really working with families because we don't want to dismiss any student from, from the program. So if there, it becomes a problem and they're concerned about it, they're working with the families to problem solve to see why, why aren't children coming to school? Because we don't want to dismiss anybody, we want them there.
Out of a question.
Yes.
So I'm looking here, the School Year Program, the voucher's five hundred and forty hours and the full-time program, is that four hundred hours like the regular school? I'm sorry, nine hundred hours like the regular school year?
The, the school year program?
Yeah, so like our regular K-12 or the elementary? Let me go to my notes.
It's...
A full day is 900 hours, correct? For the whole year, 180 days. And this is 540 hours for 180 days, correct?
Yes.
The voucher. So that's what I mean, like, what's, where are we getting the excess money to cover for the full day?
There's, there's some more information coming up on the future slides, and then I will defer to Mr. Rela for...
All right, well, I'll let you guys go through and I'll...
Yeah, more detailed information, but, yes. So the next slide does show you the, the funding for 2021, 2022. And there was increase for this year based on some, some funding sources. And we also got an increase because we are paying our employees a base salary of $15 an hour. There is some additional performance pay for programs that receive a certain level during their class observations and assessments because the programs are assessed. So they have to, they're looking at learning gains. Our students, believe it or not, our pre-K student, our VPK students are taking the FAST, which is the, the, for VPK. So they are being monitored for progress monitoring through the FAST this year. And the, the class program, which is the assessment schools, those classrooms, will be assessed for that. And if you receive a high level, you can get performance pay. However, performance funds, not pay, but performance funds. And you have to have a class score of a one, they have a one through a seven, and you must have a total composite score of four, or you would not be able to have the program next year. So I believe the next slide, Ms. Richardson, is the one that we're looking at, that the program costs for the school year programs. And the top one shows the VPK only, which is not something that we currently have. We have blended models. But we have an average cost for a VPK classroom. And this is with the cost of the teacher, or the VPK instructor, the para-professional, and there's cost rolled in for, for supplies. And our district VPK staff has rolled into this, this cost analysis. And it's $94,070 is the cost for students, for 18 students. The VPK funding would be $60,083. And it says surplus, but I'm married to an accountant, so I know those, those parentheses mean that we're in the negative. And so it would be a cost of $33,988 because the district would be funding the instructor as well as the para because the para would not, the classroom would not have any ESE students. Currently, because we have a VPK blended classroom and we have ESE students, the para and the VPK blended classroom and the ESE blended classroom are funded through our ESE department. So it's funded through, that they grant through ESE. So it's not a district, it is because it's part of ESE, but it's not the general fund district cost. So a VPK blended classroom would cost about $61,242. The funding, if we have 14 students, 14 VPK students in there, which, as you see, we have waiting lists in many places, they are filled, we get reimbursed, $46,731. And then we get VPK funding for our ESE students because they're using the voucher. The students who are the ESE students in our VPK blended classrooms are using their VPK voucher. They are, because the students that are placed in these programs may be students who are speech-only or who, who do not need many hours of direct service. So they, you know, if they are getting any direct service from ESE teachers, then they would be collecting the FTE for that. But otherwise, they are using their VPK voucher in those classrooms. And so there would be a surplus of $5,516. And the ESE blended classroom, an average ESE blended cost would be $110,407, or 110, 247,000 dollars, $110,000, I'm, I'm having a problem. And VPK students, the funding would be their voucher, which would be the 20,000, a little over $20,000. The ESE funded, funding for the 12 students comes from FTE, and that's a little over $113,000. So there would be a surplus of $22,000, almost $23,000. And as I said, the VPK staff, their salaries were figured into that and how much their cost of the VPK district staff.
When we initially did the planning for implementing an inclusive model, that's one of the things that we did take into consideration, the cost. And so that's why we do not have a VPK-only pro, like any sites with VPK-only because it would have put us at the negative. And so one of the things that we did come up with for our blended classes is that we're, whether it's VPK blended or ESE blended, the IDA grant is funding those paras in that classroom because we're servicing students with IEPs in both settings. And so that's how we're utilizing for the paras in the VPK blended classroom, funding it through our pre-K ESE grant. And then in our blended classes, we're using our pre-K, in our ESE blended classes, we're using our pre-K ESE teachers. And so they're paid for through my pre-K ESE, through the pre-K ESE grant anyways. And we're just having some spots available for students with VPK vouchers. So the teachers are being funded through the grant. And then we're generating the funds for those six students in those spots from their VPK vouchers. And so even though they are only three hours, we're able to have them all day because we have the teacher all day anyways because she's one of my pre-K ESE teachers.
I have a question, thank you for that. The, the ESE blended spot over there, the ESE funding for the 12 students, is that the Vpre-K ESE or is that regular IDA that's for like...
IDA.
IDA. And then the, on the left-hand side, there's a different IDA grant that's for Vpre-K.
No, it's still, because we still, it's still pre-K, it's still the same grant. There's that component within the grant for pre-K. And so because we do have students with IEPs there, we're utilizing the grant for those para-professionals and just the paras in the VPK blended classes.
The children are collecting, the children in the VPK blended classrooms are using their VPK voucher.
So are there two, part of the IDA grant, are there, is there like a subsection? There's a portion for Vpre-K and then there's a one, there's a portion for, I'm gonna call it K5, K12?
Yes.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, yes, there is.
And so are they served meals through the federal lunch program?
Yes.
So on this, on the, on the right side, the ESE blended, those, why, why aren't both buckets coming from the Vpre-K ESE? That's why I'm, that's my question.
Because the students in the VPK blended, they're not, those are VPK, I mean, pre-K teachers. They're not certified teachers. And they're not providing the services for our ESE students. So we cannot fund them from the grant for, for, as, for the grant because they're...
Yes, and but they can fund the para in that classroom because there are ESE students that are being served within that classroom.
I think I got it. Yes, sir.
Just to add, so, a little bit of clarification. So when we worked on this project, it's something we worked on for like literally the last month, and I've learned an incredible amount based on our discussions, which has been great. Just some underlying kind of assumptions in here. We did take the actual staffing costs. We pulled every classroom that was either VPK blended, ESE blended, identified the fully burdened costs. As Miss Dell mentioned, we pushed down departmental costs and supply costs. So we do feel like it incorporates, at least based on how we're staffed right now, on the expense side, you know, and it's an average, of course, because we have so many classrooms. But it does incorporate all the costs that, you know, we could identify. The, the other piece that's important in terms of the funding side is, you know, it assumes we're fully, the, the classrooms are filled for the entire year, starting at the beginning of the year course. With VPK, that's pretty simple because the eligibility requirements are really, you know, it's just really just an age requirement. For the ESE pre-K, there's an entire process that Ms. Hutchinson described that makes it obviously challenging staffing-wise to get them in there. But then you also need to leave spots open during the year because we know we're gonna continue to evaluate all during the year and place kids, I would assume, all the way through the spring. So there are some kind of like underlying assumptions. In terms of the ESE pre-K students, we receive our base student allocation. We receive, they receive their portion of categoricals if there's transportation. They also receive a portion of the ESE guarantee allocation on top of that. So those students are funded around $9,000, or significantly more. And I think that's why, when we kind of did a survey around the state, a lot of districts do it for funding reasons, one. Two, for inclusion reasons because there's an inclusion requirement in the IDA grant and the IDA pre-K. So that's kind of how this model has been built. But I just wanted to point out the fact that, you know, this assumes that we have all of our students in the classroom in October when they're counted in February. But the reality is, we know that's not necessarily gonna happen because we have to have spots open. If that makes sense.
It does make sense, but how does that affect the bottom line?
I was thinking it, so.
So, so it obviously makes it, it makes it challenging. You know, we certainly could have grabbed a percentage and said, you know, we expect 80% filled or 50% in the first cycle and 80% on the second, you know, survey window. You know, obviously, that's difficult to predict and it's difficult to quantify that. But certainly, you know, obviously, if we're looking at the ESE blended model and, you know, we don't fill those classrooms, we are gonna be at a deficit. There's no question about that, just based on the numbers.
Have you looked at prior year to see where it shook out at the end of '22? Fiscal year '22, school year '22? Like the cost, like you, you made assumptions.
Right.
And you built it based on averages. Okay, so then we had a whole school year that we operated under this model.
Right.
That year ended June 30th, 2022. Have you looked at where it shook out? Number of students enrolled, FTE that came in, form, the cost to run the program, to see where we were?
We have not. I think that would be a very good exercise to do. I think it's, you know, honestly, it's really challenging when we're looking at FTE and you guys have heard me talk about that ad nauseam. Like the FTE enrollment has fluctuated so much. I mean, last year, it was down, I think, over 1,500 students, our ESE pre-K was down as well. So I think it would be, it would be a worthwhile exercise, certainly, to go back maybe to '18, '19, '19, '20 and kind of look at those and then apply the same, although we didn't have this model in place. But it, it, we would certainly have the ability to look at, how many do we have enrolled in October? How many do we have in February? And work them out, math out that way.
One of the things too is to take into consideration with our summer program, the surplus that we receive from that, it helps offset for the school year too. And so that's one of the things that, when we're looking at also incorporating a second summer program, that gives us lower funding, a surplus that we can utilize for VPK during the school year as well.
I can appreciate what you just said, Ms. Hutchinson, but I, I have to, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around this and there are a lot of assumptions that are being made. And I'm okay with assumptions being made, but there comes a time when we have to kind of stick the stake in the ground and do the evaluation to see where we are, to, to, to really proof our assumptions. And Mr. Rela knows where I'm going with this. I think he understands what I'm trying to say. We make, you know, when you run a budget, at the end of the year, you, you look at and you see budget versus actual. You look at your actual costs and you make evaluations to see if in this sector, I, these assumptions that he's made, I would hope that program evaluation is being made, done, so that he can, he can come back to the board through the superintendent and tell us, these are the assumptions we made and this is where we are and this is where we ran short. If it was one model, may have had, may have stayed 100% enrolled. And so those assumptions, you know, were met and we squared out this away where we broke even or we actually did generate more income or enough income to cover the cost to run the program. The other model, we may need staff to be a little bit more diligent and be screening and working with our families to make sure the students are in class so that we're getting full funding for them. Because our staffing costs, that cost has sunk, we gotta pay that, we gotta have the people here. So we need to make sure we have the students here, but we wanna make sure that the model that we have for staffing it, that we're generating enough income to cover that cost. Because when we're not covering that cost, if it's not coming from the pot of money that is the ESE, Vpre-K ESE, and we're not generating enough funding from the state Vpre-K voucher reimbursement, and it's coming from IDA, then that money has to come from general fund. And so I'm like really paying attention to what's happening to general fund because we got a little challenge there. And I'm not dismissing the significance of having students in our schools and us having more time with them before they come to kindergarten. I understand the standards, it's just, we gotta figure out how we're gonna pay for it. That's, the work you do, I respect it 100%, but...
And for the past, I've been in the role for three years. Prior to that, we averaged about 22 to 25 pre-K ESE classes. This was prior to us even having the VPK. We've always averaged 20-something pre-K ESE classes. And so we've always had those classes. So that's why when we looked at the models, it's just opening up some spots for VPK because we had the classes anyways, so allowing some spots available in those classes for students with VPK vouchers. So that also for our indicators for state reporting, we're meeting those requirements for LRE, least restrictive environment, since we already are obligated to enroll those students who are pre-K children with IEPs.
We have that requirement that you tell me there, but then we also have to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. And so that's why I'm looking, and I keep going to my, our chief of finance to tell me how that's happening. Because if we have to do it and we gotta pay for it, the money's gotta come from someplace. And so I'm just, that's why I'm just kind of leaning in on to see exactly how. And historically, I'd like to see, like historically, how the program ran and how the actual cost. We don't have to do that now, but I'm just saying, that's, would be something that would kind of give me the assurances that we're coming through and this, these assumptions that are being made, that they're good assumptions and that we're okay, that we're not losing our shirt.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, and I know you wanna expand, when you were speaking earlier, you were talking about the summer programs. I think the summer helps you make up for the difference and we, because we wanna make this work. I mean, I had a chance to visit this week with Ms. Richardson and Ms...
Nieves.
Nieves. I knew I was gonna mess up your name, and I had a wonderful time. And this is so important because those kids, I think I was in a VPK blended class and then ESE blended, well, five came in. And so it was wonderful getting them ready for kindergarten, I think is really important. But I know, having those summer programs, you got your waiting list and I'm sure you all do a good job of working with those families. And I know they're ready and you're up on it to make sure. So if, in doing your research, when we're looking at, because I know they want to expand, how much would it cost for an additional VPK class? If we can look at it?
We'll discuss that later in the PowerPoint because I've had opportunity to visit other districts. I go to conferences with all of the contacts from the entire state. And so I've had opportunity to talk with other districts and how they fund their pre-K programs.
And we have that coming up. And we met, we met with the, the staff from Leon County on a Zoom. And Ms. Hutchinson and the team and I met, and we talked about how they fund. But another thing that I wanna address too is the VPK blended classrooms. We have to look to, if there are not, if we have, don't have the ESE students at a certain point, and that's the, the great collaboration is having that communication with Mrs. Hutchinson and Mrs. Nieves and Ms. Richardson. If there are not students going into them, making sure that those, especially those VPK blended classrooms are completely full. I mean, we have students that if Ms. Hutchinson doesn't anticipate placing ESE students in those blended classrooms, that we fill them up. You know, and having a time that we're saying, okay, we may have two or three ESE students, but making sure we're filling those students, those classes up to 18. Or we can go to 20, but 18 is kind of our ideal. But making sure those VPK blended classrooms are full. Um, but making sure those VPK blended classrooms are full all the time. We want all of them to be full, but we understand we have to leave space in the ESC blended for any students who are staffed during the year.
The other thing I was going to say while we're on this page, well, I'm on the summer program costs, but, um, these are, everybody's an Alachua County employee, right?
And the, the people who are.
Work, the staff, yeah.
Yes, the VPK instructors are not certified teachers, but they have their CD.
And so they're getting benefits and part of Florida retirement?
Yes.
Which I don't think is included in.
I think the cost when Mr. Rela, we took, we took every, it does include that. We took every, um, stu-, every instructor, para, ESC teacher, um, at their current level of pay. We got them, the names of those people and Mr. Rela calculated it based on their salary and their benefits. To make sure that those costs are included.
I'm just saying for the option two, for the summer program, which I see you're not up to, I must be ahead.
Yeah.
That amount there is just for the hourly sal- salary.
Yes, that's toward the hourly, I'm sorry, that, yes, that's toward the hourly salary. Um, that is not part of the, the others, no. But the, the, um, regular program, it is. That was calculated, um, staff member by staff member, whether it was teacher, instructor or para. And then our next slide is, is the summer cost of the program. And like you pointed out, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr.
Sorry, it's okay. Um, I'm wondering if, not at this workshop, but if it might be helpful to get like a brief overview at a future workshop for board members of how the IDEA matrix funding works. You know, like how a student who's on consult doesn't get as much funding, which would be like our students in that VPK blended would be considered on consult. They're not getting any direct services unless the speech language pathologist is pushing in. They, there's a classroom ESC para that's being paid out of IDEA and kind of the kids are sharing the cost of that para because they're all on consult versus the kids in the self-contained pre-K ESC who will have the highest IDEA funding because they're getting full-time ESC services plus often more push-in OTPT, speech language. I wonder if that might just help clarify like these different funding streams and how they're coming together.
And some of, and some of the, like for Newberry, for example, because we have a VPK blended class there and we have a pre-K ESC self-contained, so a child in that blended class, they may utilize their voucher for those three hours, but then they may go over and get some services from the pre-K ESC teacher. And so it depends on the school and if we have a pre-K ESC teacher onsite as well. Um, so it varies, so they could be consulted only, um, but, but they may not be depending on what the service needs are for the student.
And that, that is a, a beauty of the model where there is a pre-K ESC self-contained and either a VPK or, um, or ESC blended in, in the classroom, so. Any other questions before we move on to the, the summer cost? And as you pointed out, that was not, um, Ms. Abbott, it was not calculated with their benefits in this. But the VPK, um, the summer program, it's the one-degree teachers. Uh, there's no assistant required, but it is the best practice. Um, because if you've ever taught four-year-olds, one adult to twelve-four-year-olds, it's not a good thing. And I did it for a year and no. Um, and you know, but so it's not best practice. So there's a maximum of twelve students, three hundred hours for the students. Um, and then there's an additional two days for the staff to set up and close out. And option one just shows the one teacher option and the cost of that and then what we're reimbursed with a full class. And I believe that, you know, the full class, we had a full class last year and we would anticipate having a full class and more this summer if we could grow the program. Um, it tells you what the cost is for the option one with one teacher and option two for two teachers, again with that twelve, twelve student max. And we did do, we did have two teachers in the class this past year at Rawlings.
Just to clarify, this option here, that's just the base pay, it doesn't, it's not loaded with.
It, it, that was not calculated with the, the benefits and things in it. So we would, we have to recalculate that. Oh, did you?
So we, we didn't calculate the benefits for summer because they don't get benefits for the summer, they're OPS.
So you don't, it doesn't, because they're OPS?
They get the.
Okay, so there are those, so that is not a cost. I stand corrected, that's why I have my brains in back here. So, so that is the direct cost.
Just, just to clarify, we would, we would still be responsible for the FICA portion, so that's seven point six five percent.
Okay, so.
No, no health insurance, so the folks who work in this don't get health insurance over the summer? That's pause, or is it paid just for the?
It's paid during the school year, um, because we, we basically, for the insurance paid over the ten-month period that folks are in school or our, our students and staff are in school.
And that was calculated for the, in the previous amount?
Right, so the, the previous slide, it includes, um, our benefits percentage is twenty-one point three two percent, I think. Um, insurance is another eight thousand dollars on top of that and then plus the salary cost was all kind of included in the blended and, uh, the VPK blended and ESC pre-K blended.
You said the insurance, I mean, the benefits cost is twenty-one point three, so that's FICA and, or twenty-one point, you said it's something after the twenty-one percent, but.
So it's, it's, it's FICA, early retirement, um, retirement through FRS, terminal pay, which totals, I think this year it's twenty-one point three two percent. And then the insurance is around eight thousand. Um, and I will say, you know, in terms of like the ESC blended, you know, we talked a little bit about the, the FTE and kind of how that works. Um, I, I do not think if like, if we're expecting for the ESC blended or even the self-contained in most instances to be something that's like standalone, going to pay for itself in terms of what we spend and what we receive, I'm just not sure that's a reality because you have to hold slots for ESC students that come in through late fall and through the spring. Um, we're certainly, I'm happy to do that analysis, but I can tell you, um, it's very unlikely just based on the enrollment trends and how that works, that it's going to be a break-even kind of situation.
So if, if we're not, that's why we need to know. That's why I'm asking for the analysis, because if we're, if we're spending more here that we're not getting reimbursed for, that means we can't spend in some other place. So we have to, I, I, I would like to know where we, where all the money is being spent. So that if when we have to cut and we have to tighten the belt, what we have to give up, we're giving up this for that. We can say that to the citizens of Alachua County.
Understood.
If, if we have to cut, do a riff, a reduction in workforce, we can say we had to do this to, to give up, give up this to keep this. And so if this is important, I mean, I also, I'm, I'm just going to say this because it's just kind of with me is that we, we had Head Start and I, and I'm not trying to go back and relive, but we had a dedicated funding source to be in this early learning space to get our students before kindergarten and we don't have that. And so this I know we have to do and that's something different, but I don't want us to be trying to redo, to duplicate what we did with Head Start and to get up to that many students. That's, that's what it feels like we're trying to do, like there's this creep. And I want us to make sure we're doing things well and that we can afford them. And I'm just, I'm tired of, um, I'm, I always hear we don't have money and I'm really trying to figure out, um, where our funds are going. And I'm asking for detail, this is nothing personally against you all, I'm really just trying to get a level of detail and familiarity with the sources and uses of the dollars, the tax dollars that we get so that we can make good decisions.
And so one of the things with pre-K ESC to keep in mind is that we, the last couple of years, we've averaged about two hundred and fifty students in pre-K ESC. We have about one hundred and twenty that roll up to kindergarten every year. So then we start the program with about a hundred kids, but we're evaluating through the summer, all through the school year. So when we started school this year, we might've had about a hundred and something kids, but then we, we gradually increased because we are constantly evaluating and staffing students all throughout the school year. Um, and so we start out with lower numbers, but as we're evaluating our numbers enrolled. So I can give you an example with Erby, we took away one of, we lost one of our allocations at Erby. Right now, my classes are sitting at seven, my pre-K ESC class is sitting at seventeen students and I have about ten that we know are coming up that are going to be staffed for Erby. And transportation is having challenges to try to figure out how to bus students from High Springs that is on for Erby, pre-K to Tabata Norton where I have some spots available. And so that's one of the things that we run into with, um, pre-K ESC. New, Newberry, they're sitting at seventeen pre-K ESC students. And we have an allocation there, but we can't find a, this principal cannot find a teacher to hire there. So that's another problem. So with pre-K ESC is tricky because we may not, and we don't know what we're going to receive necessarily. And so we do look at what we've had, um, in regards to enrollment over the course of time, but we're constantly evaluating. And I can tell you with, um, Shan's being here and more knowledge of our pre-K ESC program, we're getting about ten to twelve referrals a week from fillers. Right now I have a hundred referrals sitting waiting for evaluations. That's not including the ones that were mandated to go ahead and get evaluated prior to their birthday. And so, um, there is a need, we're seeing an increase in the need of students coming forward with families that are saying, we want our children to be evaluated. And so the need is there and we are, um, we start out lower because they transition to kindergarten. But it, every year since I've been in this program, by February bursting out of the seams and we're seeing that now as well.
And I think what we're seeing as well in VPK is that we have students that are VPK students that come in that may need to be evaluated, but their parents have not gone through that process, may not be aware of that process. And that is what our VPK instructors and the VPK district team is doing is looking at those students who may have not been evaluated or even up for that. That may need that evaluation so that we can identify them and get them the correct support in school.
Let me ask a question right quick, maybe this is to Mr. Rela, I don't know. Have we ever considered using Title I funds for early?
That, that is coming up in a slide too, yes. Yes, that's coming up too, just funding options and that's why we're looking toward the future. And that's kind of our next slides are looking at, you know, just first of all, I mean, I think we can agree, early education edu-, is, is so very important. And expanding or maintaining the program that we have now is, maintaining our program is our goal, but we would love to be able to serve more students. Um, because it benefits school readiness, um, it supports our SI schools, it supports our Title I schools. These children are in school another year and because they're going mostly to their zone schools, they're, they're growing and developing those relationships with the families and the students early. And we do have three hundred-plus students that are on a waiting list. So additional funding options and just looking at funding options that other districts have used or funding options that are out there, Title I, Part A is, um, because the focus area of early childhood, that is something that we could consider and that I've got, of course, is board direction and superintendent's, you know, direction. But that is something that some districts use for parts of the program. It's not funding everything. Um, in Leon County, they, they fund half a day of an additional parent in the classroom because in the VPK classrooms, you have to maintain ratio. And so for that extended three hours, they fund, they fund a parent for that. Um, some early, um, early childhood grants, uh, we've worked and talked with Dr. Boker about options to look at grant funding. There is a, an option of parent pay. Some districts do parent pay for that additional three hours. The first three hours, VPK voucher, you're in, be reimbursed, um, parent pay for this, for the sec-, the other three hours. You know, the concern with that is we want, you know, children to have this opportunity. How do we, how do we determine the amount, number one, for parent pay? And what if a parent can't pay? Um, and then there are also school readiness funds where you can look at a sliding scale. Um, and you, and it's a sliding scale based on parent income and we can look at that. But with school readiness funds, you have additional requirements for staff.
Still, let me ask you a question. You mentioned if a parent can't pay, how do we handle that?
Excuse me?
If a parent can't pay, how do we handle that?
And, and we don't currently have a parent pay program, so, so we, everything, we are, we are funding, the district is, with, with the funds from, um, ESC and things. We don't, um, some districts are doing that for that second three hours, for the second half of the day. But again, uh, when in Leon County, they said that if his parent could not pay, they're, they weren't kicking the children out. Yes, ma'am?
Um, so I actually chair a private preschools board. Been doing that for years and years. So, um, if you have questions for our director, I can get her in touch because we accept the school readiness funds. And, um, I can tell you that for our VPK students, school readiness funds cover our wraparound fees, which at our school are three hundred fifty dollars, which is kind of middle of the road. A lot are charging five hundred, five fifty, six hundred. There's a few charging more like two hundred, two fifty. But as a district, even if we charged a hundred dollars a month, which is like nothing, parents would still be, I mean, compared to the wraparound fees at private preschool, it's nothing. Granted, we don't have EDEP for VPK, so they have to pay for. But even if it was like, at our school, it's three fifty to go till two. If you want till five thirty, it's five fifty, so, you know.
And, and the school readiness funds are a great option, but you, we also, like we said, have to do the inspections. There's a little more monitoring and there is a way, you know, trying to make sure that everything, we're following all the rules. And then there's, you know, all of these options, but there could be different options at different places. Maybe using Title I, because not every school has, is Title I. If you use Title I funds for some schools, it may be that you want to use school readiness for others. I don't know that school readiness is something that you want to jump into with every school immediately because it is kind of a, a learning curve. And, um, Ms. Nieves gave me an informa-, some information and it was a notebook like this, just about school readiness. But looking at those options, because we want to make this available, if we can, for every school and every child. And we, you know, we don't want to have a student not be able to come because of the parent pay. Now, parents don't have to pay, they could come for the half-day. Students can come for their half-day voucher if they want to stay the three hours. That's another option we have to think about if they want to stay, we can do that. They could just come for those three hours. We're still getting our students, you know, three hours every day in our classrooms. So there, there are different funding options, but looking for a direction on, you know, where, where do we go from here for the funding? Because we value the program and we see, we see the benefits.
If we did, like you can leave after three hours if you don't want to pay wraparound, you're still paying the teacher for those additional three hours?
Yeah, you're, I mean, in the ESC, the, the teacher is being paid through IDEA.
Right.
So, but the VPK instructor, you know, what do you do there if you have a VPK instructor? Yes, you are, but so how, she's there for a whole day unless you have a three-hour employee. Or well, a three, three hours a day for teaching, it could be part-time. But then you come, the problem is who's going to do part-time?
So some districts, what they do that, that have the three hours, only use the VPK vouchers, they have a morning three-hour class and an afternoon three-hour class. But they do run into some problems when it comes to dismissal and picking up and things such as that with attendance requirements and things. So, um, there are some pros and cons and, um, to any model that you implement.
I have a question about the use of Title I funds. So the district gets a Title I allocation and so would this come from that part of the allocation? So it would be somewhat watered down for the rest of the Title I schools? Okay.
And so some of the districts that utilize their Title I funds, what they do, um, and I spent time at Leon and I spent time talking with other, um, district contacts, is that it is students who are zoned for those schools. And that's how they receive the buy-in from the principals, because it's your children. You just have them for an additional year, they're going to transition right into your kindergarten classes. And so that's what a lot of districts is, they utilize Title I funds. The funds are used for that, that school funds are used for that school and it's their students who are zoned for their school that would be transitioning into their kindergarten program.
If, if we are, you know, concerned about moving into accepting school readiness because it is a lot of work, um, could we not do our own, you know, we have three tiers of parent pay, like free, reduced and full that match our lunch?
I, I think that's possible, but right now some of the schools, you know, many of them are already all free lunches and so they're not collecting those free reduced. And when, we're not opposed to school readiness, I think it's just something that we need to maybe try out because I think to do it across, you know, across ten, twelve, fourteen sites might be overwhelming and with the staff we have might not be possible at this point. But I think it's something to consider for some sites. But I think it's something to consider for some sites, especially if you considered using Title I site funds to possibly use in other schools. The schools that are not Title I still have students who need VPK. How would you, how would you support that? So that, you know, children would be on a sliding scale for that, that pay.
And looking at the school readiness funds, I mean, will provide a significant amount of surplus for us. But one of the things we would have to, if there's something that we're looking at implementing for this upcoming school year per se, we would have to move and make a decision rather quickly because it's some requirements to get approved and submitting the application for the school readiness. And we have to get inspections and things completed. So that decision would have to be made rather quickly, at least by, I think, January or so when we were looking at it, if we want to move in that direction. And as Ms. Dell shared, we wouldn't want to implement it all of our sites because it would be a large, taking on for us with the, the staff that we have. But if we piloted at a couple of our sites, we know that it would provide a significant surplus of funds for us. But we would have to determine, so with the school readiness funds, it's based upon income. And so then they just, they'll say, based upon the income, the parent, your parent, a minimum of paying two ninety-five. But then we can set a cost and we may say, okay, we're gonna, the parent will pay seventy-five dollars a month or a hundred dollars a month. And then that surplus will come to us, plus we get the amount that we receive from school readiness as well. And so that's how we end up with such a surplus of funding with the school readiness monies.
And we can get more information, if you're interested in more information about school readiness and more details. But just, and the, the next slide, it just does talk about, you know, some of the VPK funding options of other districts. And Ms. Hutchinson has, has met with several. We did meet with Leon County. And they do, they have VPK, E S C blended, but their teachers are all E S C certified teachers. They do have a parent pay portion and they do use some Title I funds for that. I will say that the first thing that the person from Leon County said is that they do function in the red. And that either, you know, they're, they're not, they're not, not, it's not that they're making money, but they're, it is, it is coming some from district funds. And then the different parent pay, like I said, VPK blended, parent pay, Title I, some Head Start funds. There are options. And we're open to looking at all possible options because we believe and value the program and we want to make sure it, it continues on. How it continues on, we don't know, but we want to make sure that we're providing these opportunities. And so we're here to, yes, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. I might add one, one other funding thing that we, we, somebody mentioned it, but we didn't go back to it. But for the summer program, if you'll see, like for option number two, we'll actually have a surplus of twenty-one thousand dollars. So if we ran, for example, three summer programs, that would cover a VPK only class or a VPK blended. The other thing is the VPK funding that you'll see on the VPK blended model and the E S C blended model, those are pretty fixed. It's going to, like for fourteen students, it's going to be about forty-six thousand. It could vary if some child drops off and we take a couple of weeks to put another one in or a child has poor attendance. It could vary a little, but like maybe to forty-three thousand, not like a tremendous amount. So for example, if you have a class, let's say at Hidden Oak, that's a VPK blended, and we need sixty-one thousand dollars to cover that cost for that classroom, between the fourteen kids in that classroom and the six kids in the E S C blended, that would cover that cost. So we can use the VPK funds that we're getting from the E S C blended to also cover the cost. It can go, so we, it's not just that one class covering that class because the E S C blended class is not going to use that twenty thousand dollars from VPK to pay for their teacher or assistant because that's paid out of I D E A.
I, I, just for the rest, I said that Ms. Neves sounds more confident about the finances than Mr. Rella, but I can't go off Ms. Neves. I have to go off of what he gives us because that's what. We're kind of, the time is well spent. I know Dr. McNeely will need to get up and, and stretch. And I will as well. You guys have a couple more slides. So let's let them get through these slides and then we'll take a short break and then we'll come back as well.
So the important thing here is our timeline. We're in the timeline of right now, we need to look at what, where we're going to serve students next year, where we're going to have VPK spots for next school year. Because that starts happening in January. And I will say, Tricia and Jerry and Diamond have already gotten calls. They get calls pretty much every day. Where, when, when are you, when can we sign up? When can we sign up? So there are, they're reaching out and we want to publicize it and get the information out. So we need that outreach in, in, in January. In February through April, they start looking at the, and accepting students into the program. And then they close out the year and then they have the summer program and then we start. So there is a time constraint of, you know, where we're going to advertise these programs. What are we going to do for next year? Yes, ma'am?
On that particular item, do you have, because you've got, did I say three forty or two forty on the waiting list right now? So will any of those families get higher priority or do they have to start all over again?
They would be, they would be transitioning to kindergarten because we can only take four-year-olds. But we do, like you said, we are looking at evaluating the numbers and saying, okay, if this VPK blended classroom isn't full, we can look at, does she have, Ms. Hutchinson have E S C students? And put students in now? We can't put students in after like March, spring break time. You can't enter new students into the program. But if we have VPK opening and VPK slots, we can add in. And that's what we've been talking with Ms. Hutchinson about as well.
For instance, we had additional slots at Archer. I didn't have as many E S C students there. So because we didn't have as many E S C students, we utilized more VPK vouchers there. So we're constantly talking and evaluating and looking at our needs.
Dr. McNeely, we can also, if they didn't use their voucher this year, we can offer them to come to our summer program.
Okay.
Yes. And that, that is something that they can, and that's, like I said, we would like to have more of opportunities during the summer. So I mean, at the bottom line here is just investing in high quality early childhood education helps address the achievement gap before kindergarten starts. And this was very powerful, the next slide that Ms. Neves shared, is that there are about two thousand days from birth to kindergarten. It's not a long time. You think it's a long time, but I think about, you know, two thousand days. And we, you know, and that children, eighty percent of their brain development is done by age three, ninety percent by five. And so we can make a huge impact if we can get our children and students in there as early as possible and provide a quality program. So just last questions. I know we've asked questions all along. Guidance, looking to the superintendent and board as we move forward.
So if I'm, if I understood you, looking at your timeline, I think you guys were expecting guidance from the board today on the number of classrooms you can have. So I don't think I have enough information to say we do any more than what you have right now. I'm not even sure if I have enough information to say we stay where we are. That's, that's just me. So if you all want to, Ms. McGraw, you have what?
I would say when we kind of discuss as a team, one, the, based upon our need, if we did expand at least one additional pre-K E S C blended class at Erby because of the significant need that we have there. So what we had discussed as a team is that for the most part, maintaining what we have, but putting a pre-K E S C blended class at Erby because we have such a significant need as it relates to our E S C students there in that area.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with us expanding the one because I, you know, looking at the numbers, I think you all will put your heads together and make sure. I'm confident in that. After having, because after visiting the class, this is extremely important. And I think one of the things, the kids with disabilities, I think blended in, this really helped them with their peers on what I witnessed. And so I think with maintaining what you have and adding one, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
And the, the principal at Erby said she has portables right now. She would be happy to do that. And I'd also like to say, we would like to, you know, look at direction for summer too because we really do want to add a program probably at Toowiliger, if at all possible, for a summer program because we know that in the SWAG area, there's a need. And, and we want to make sure that we have a program that serves students in the east side and the west side of town. And Toowiliger was a, a good option. And so we're looking for that direction as well, moving forward.
So maybe we had some, the, the, the numbers. I know we have another meeting on this, sixteen?
No, that's what, we're in a tight spot because next week is winter break and we don't have any more meetings in December. Next meeting is in January. And.
I'm comfortable with.
And the one thing is why we need a direction in January is because that's when the voucher window opens. And all of the VPK programs within the county, parents have the option of putting which, where they want to utilize their voucher. And it opens in January. And so it's not that we're the only VPK program in the county. It's daycare providers that have VPK as well. And the parents, the window opens, the vouchers open in around January.
Yeah. I think that it's, VPK is very important, especially the E S C because when you're getting those children before they get to kindergarten, and it makes a huge difference. Excuse me. I, and so I, like Ms. Surtin, am concerned about costs, especially since we're offering that additional three hours in the afternoon. If we weren't offering that, I think our costs would be covered by the vouchers and, and E S C. And so we, we might could expand to more sites if we were only offering three hours. And I'm particularly concerned about SI schools, Idowild in particular. And so, because they had such a list there. And so even if it was nothing but a summer program at Idowild, when there's more free space and it was only the three hour program, it would be beneficial. And even if, you know, even if you, I think it would be beneficial. And so I, I think we need to have some sort of, like when you're doing your budget for the next year and you know you have those E S C students that are going to filter in throughout the year, you could do a contingency, take, take the income for four kids off of there to account for E S C kids coming in more realistic than working with the total amount of E S C that you might have for that year. So I think that might be a suggestion, but I do think we need to know how much of the, of it's being funded from, from the general fund. But I'm definitely very pro VPK.
Thank you. So looking at summer program expansion, it looks like that's self-sustaining. So, because it's that three hundred hour crammed in program with an O P S summer appointment. So my feeling for, my feeling for summer program is if you can get the teachers, if you can get the teachers, make it happen. If we can get the teachers and the students who haven't, because I know a lot of them have used their voucher elsewhere. So it's finding students who haven't used their voucher and someone who wants to teach that extremely long summer day. But if you can make those happen, I'm all for that.
Yeah, actually, now that you mentioned, I wanted to tell you that we do target the children who were in E S C and only had an I E P and they did not have a voucher. So we target them to see if they want to come to VPK over the summer because we're sure that they have used their voucher and they definitely need that extra support.
Absolutely. And then in terms of adding E S C blended that has an E S C teacher, again, that's a self-sustaining model. We're looking at over twenty thousand dollars in surplus. So even if the class doesn't end up totally full, we should still break even or come very close to it. So again, I would be comfortable expanding that where we have a teacher and space and students. So Erby, Newbury, though it sounds like they have, you just can't get the teacher. But I mean, I've taught a pre-K E S C class with seventeen kids. I know exactly what that looks like. And like, my heart goes out to those teachers because they are superstars. Like that is a very tough job. But what I would like to see in addition to like the, those small expansions for this coming school year is to spend that school year getting a couple of sites, the school readiness approved. And let's see what that does to our budget. Because I actually, I don't think that VPK is the same as Head Start because we have Head Start. A lot of our students don't qualify for it. There's a lot of students who don't qualify for Head Start, but qualify for school readiness. So VPK with school readiness can fill that kind of gap area. And those are still students that really, really need this early childhood service. And having it at our public schools allows us to catch children with disabilities quicker and acclimate children to our school campus and make it more likely that they're going to stay at our schools and not take vouchers elsewhere, which is big for our budget. So I want to see what we can do with school readiness to make the VPK blended or VPK only not just break even, but maybe even bring in some money.
Thank you. Dr. McNeely, did you have?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. And also I, I wanted to share, and I'll give you the hard copy. The VPK team got some input from parents and teachers, just testimonials of what the program has meant to them. And I want to share that because they, they worked very hard on this wonderful presentation. But we thank you for your time and the input. And Mr. Andrew?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I know I'm standing between us and a stretch or a break. But certainly, as we talk about achievement gaps here in Latshaw County, there's no doubt that, and yes, we are K-12, but we have got to capture kids prior to them getting into kindergarten and have them kindergarten ready. So, and I think we all agree with that, as it's been mentioned by our colleagues, our board members, that we have to identify where that funding's going to come from. And, and so it is something we have to take a hard look at and make decisions and really set our priorities. I do agree, school readiness, I think we should pilot that and go ahead and get that going. Why wait to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year when we could get a little bit of something to get our feet wet done in twenty-three, twenty-four and figure out all the ins and outs and meeting their requirements and all those types of things? Sounds like they have some requirements like Head Start where they come in and do inspections and things like that.
They do, yes.
When it comes to screening, then we probably need to lean in and figure out how we help with screening so we can identify more pre-K E S C students, which would generate funding and expand sites. And, because I know you don't have the capacity to probably do that with our team. So that's one thing for us to consider. Certainly how Title I looks, that is robbing Peter to pay Paul. We understand that. So we have to figure that out. But maybe parent pay is an option and we look at that scale. I think it's all those things that you all have mentioned, that you've, you've been very creative to date. And we can continue to use that creativity to, to try to expand these programs to get with our kids. Because that is alarming when you think about, it's eighteen hundred and something days by the time they turn five. And, and we need to capture at least the last two or three hundred in echoing summer programs. Definitely something we should probably look at. And in particular, to the board members' comments, you know, Idowild, Metcalf, Williams, if there's kids waiting to get into those programs now, I would suppose we can get kids into those schools in the summer. And so maybe those are three SI schools that we look at immediately to try to expand summer programs in those particular schools. Thank you.
Well, wait, wait, wait. Is that guidance that you're giving that we're going to expand in SI schools? I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused, so.
That's an opinion that I'm giving. You know, you all are given the guidance. I think we ought to look at, if we have forty-eight children or whatever the number was at Idowild right now that would like to be in, then I think we look, that's when space is available. It sounds to me like we don't have space available right now at Idowild during the regular school year.
That is, that's.
Correct?
Yes, the physical space, there was not physical space.
Right. And then, so, and I know there was, I guess, fourteen children at Metcalf, twenty at Williams, so.
And there, and, and I will address it briefly. We, we cannot run a program at Metcalf currently because we have been on, on probation. The first time we can reapply to do that is the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay.
Twenty-three, twenty-four? Okay, sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four. So we, we cannot have a VPK program, summer or school year, at Metcalf at this point. But we can reapply for twenty-three.
If they were in that.
Yes, Rawlings. And we, and that's where we had the program this summer, it was at Rawlings.
Okay.
But, yes.
So I, I'm, I, I was really like paying attention to my colleagues. Did I, did I say what I, did I give what I wanted? I don't think I did, what, what I was thinking. But I'm, I want to proceed, I don't really want to proceed with anywhere. I've been asking for additional information. So this is, I'm, I'm, Mr. Andrew, I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm kind of in a box where I'm not able to give staff or you direction as to where I think we should go. Because a couple of questions that I've asked haven't been answered over the time. The screen and expansion, when you all were here in May, I asked about that, the cost of us doing that and how we pay for it. I didn't, I haven't gotten that information.
With the, to have an additional evaluation team, if we wanted to, we don't have the manpower. We have a shortage now of psychologists and S L Ps.
Okay, well, you asked us, that's when you came in, that's the cost that you made. And so I was saying, okay, but we've, let's look at that and how do we pay for it and let's get it done. Now you say you can't do it, so I guess that's not, you can't fill it.
Right now, we have, I think we have about four or five vacancies for staffing specialists. We have about four psychologist vacancies. And so that's the piece we're in. So what we're looking at as a solution is my team is working towards um incorporating a couple of more evaluations a week. And um we kind of even proposed if there was an opportunity for some overtime, maybe going, doing, because you know, going from, doing some evaluations from 4:00 to 5:30 or something during the week as well and just looking at overtime or something for them. So we're trying to be creative in solutions and how we could work in possibly additional evaluations because we know that we have the vacancies um in the district currently for the members that we would need to evaluate. And then possibly also looking during the summer, having a second evaluation team, which is what we did this past summer. We had a second evaluation team that helped us during the summer um this past year and looking at possibly doing that this upcoming summer as well. So we're trying to come up with some solutions on how we can get in more evaluations to meet our needs.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchison. Okay, so that brings us back to um the financials, which I have been asking. And I just, given our current budget challenges that we're having, I, I have to proceed cautiously before I put any more strain on the general fund. And I don't have enough information to make a decision right now to give you what you need in December. So now this may drag out, I say drag out because we run a break now. So there may be a delay in us being able to get, for me to be able to give you any feedback. I mean, you've gotten it from the majority of the people. But I just, I think any decision that we make, we have to consider the impact on our general fund because our financial condition ratio right now is um a little unstable. And we're trying to stabilize that. And so that is my hesitancy. That's one thing there and I, that's directed at our staff here. And then the other thing that I would like to just kind of throw out there, maybe you all bring back to us, is an evaluation of our programs, the children that are getting evaluated, that come through us, how we compare with other people that are providing the same VPK service around, but.
So for pre-K ESC for evaluation, we have to do an entry. We get, we do an entry when they enter the program. And then we have exit assessments once they leave and are transitioning into um, into kindergarten. And so those are part of our reporting for DOE on our LEA profile for pre-K ESC. For our VPK students, they have the class assessment, they're also taking FAS, they have the class.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're taking FAS this year. But we could also look at students who were in the program last year, who are currently in kindergarten and how they're performing on the FAS.
And then for the summer program, when we're talking about having a summer class, even if we incorporate it, Ms. Della, you can step in with the FICA um component of it. It's still, we still get a surplus for the summer. So that was the thing, um this year, we had the one VPK summer class. We would just like to be able to offer a second class on the west side during the summer. And so that was the only um, you know, request that we had, just needing some guidance and having, moving forward with the second summer VPK class.
Right. And so that, that's what I, I want to, because like I say, I know you all need to move forward. And I know everybody keeps talking about money. And so I'm looking at the surpluses. And so maybe if we can walk through that, that could help us with that one class or one, you know, for this summer is what I'm looking at, which would not have, would you have, have any money come out of Title, I mean, general funds?
For the summer program?
Right, that's, no. So if it's no, we're just adding that one class.
It's voucher, the voucher money that we receive back covers the, actually, the two teachers to be in the summer program and there's a surplus. But I guess we would have to, you know, work in the other information to, to look at the benefits and things. But, but it still covers, there is a surplus.
Right, so, so the cost for that additional class is what, 30, 34?
The cost for an additional summer class?
Yes.
The cost to the district should be nothing for an additional summer class.
I just want to make sure I'm clear because I'm trying to help you.
It should be nothing. And it would be, you know, at a school where they're having a summer, you know, a summer program. We would hope, you know, that there is a summer program, summer school for some of the time. It does run longer, but the school is open, the building is open all summer.
Because we're going to maintain what we have.
We're going to maintain.
You're asking to add one uh summer class.
One summer class and potentially one ESC pre-K at Erby. We would just, pre-K ESC, that's blended.
Is that cost, an additional cost or?
The pre-K ESC blend is come from our grant. And so it would be a pre-K ESC blend with maybe about six voucher spots. But a pre-K blended because we have such a significant need for ESC students in that area.
I'm just looking at it from a cost standpoint because that seems, you know, some people have the hesitation, but I, I.
Yes, I do.
You know, but I supported, so thank you.
Thank you. And I, I want, I'll pass these out, just the information from the parents. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchison and Ms. Dell and your team. We're going to take a uh 10, 15 minute break, 15 minute? For me? You want me to come there, you want to ask me now? Go ahead. Well, no, you've got to ask me now if it's about that form right there. Okay, that would be good, thank you. We'll come back.
So Ms. Wise, you're doing the Camp Crystal, you and Mr. Rella?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's your lucky day.
It's my lucky day. I lost my colleague.
Here they come. You know, it's like telling seventh graders it's lunchtime. You don't have to tell us twice there's a break.
They skedaddled, huh?
Yes, they do. They're always on time to lunch. Thank you.
I saw Ms. Jones stick her head in the room. Do you know where Dr. McNeely went? Give her a tardy slip.
After school time now.
No, so she was talking first. Instead of taking care of business first. You know, kids, how we tell our kids, do what you're supposed to do first before you do that extra stuff. So since Dr. McNeely's is back, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I think Ms. Jones will come on in. The floor is yours. Tell us how you want us to do this. Do you want us to wait and ask our questions? Or do you want us to do them intermittently as where they are or what would be best?
Sure. I think, first of all, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity and I am open to either of those models. I have almost thirty slides, so if you'd like to stop us as we go. My short-term memory may be better than my long-term memory, so we could do that.
Sounds good. We will see, because it may be better to do it right where you are instead of waiting.
Absolutely. And we can do combo platter, too. Was in middle school for twenty-four years, so I can roll with the punches. So thank you all so much for this opportunity to come back before you to give you a Camp Crystal presentation. Like Mrs. Dell said, there will be some information in here that we shared in April just to make sure that we update those of you board members who are new or who may not have been here in April. But we also have some new information in response to some of the questions we've received. So with that, I'll just jump right in and, oh, I thought this was gonna work. Oh, it worked. Oh, it was so slow. I was like, now I gotta go backwards. You know what? I have to be patient with the clicker. Okay. All right. Sorry, everyone. So we have two programs that we'll talk about today at Camp Crystal. We have our school year programming, which inside of that is two different programs. And one is our second grade field trip. This is every single second grader in our district goes for a one-day trip to Camp Crystal with their teachers and parent chaperones. And this is actually a high-parent chaperone participation trip and works through several science-related lessons and gets exposure to camp. So we all... This next slide, I'm sorry, is a day at a glance of our second-day trip. So our Camp Crystal teachers actually have CDLs and there are buses available to them so that our Camp Crystal teachers do all of the driving for these field trips so that we don't have that complication of either having to be... Wait until we have our regular route drivers available to take them out there and bring them back, which, as you know, is a ways away. So those camp teachers pick the students up at school. They get to camp mid-morning and go through about four rotations of activities, visiting the ecosystems and visiting the museum to see about the animals that live in these ecosystems. There's a hay ride, weather permitting, of course, a lot of these things, and lunch. And then they board the buses and the Camp Crystal teachers take them back to the school and the camp teachers return the buses to camp. Our fifth-grade field trip sees all of our fifth graders, our fifth-grade teachers, and lots of parent chaperones as it's an overnight residential setting. It's two, it's like a three-day, two-night trip with academic focus, but also a lot of team-building and recreational activities to help build community in the schools. And there are linked, I'm not gonna go through them unless you specifically want me to for the sake of time, but linked in this presentation online, I know your hard copy is a live link, but you can click on these links here to see a fifth-grade schedule, to see what the coursework is like and the alignment to our standards. So the second big type of programming we have at Camp Crystal is summer camp programming. And this happens during eight weeks of the summer. There are four one-week sessions and two two-week sessions that see approximately nine-hundred-and-eighty-four campers a summer. Current cost for camp is five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for one week and a thousand ninety for two weeks. Currently, our out-of-county camper fee is seventy-five dollars for students who... Or for campers who live outside of Alachua County. And the school-year camp staff work as well as OPS summer camp counselors. And we'll talk more about that... Right now. There's approximately seventy-five staff members during summer camp and that consists of our cabin counselors, so they're assigned to each cabin and they reside with our campers. There's a leadership team, an onsite RN. We also have some volunteers called counselors in training and support staff in the business office, the maintenance department, and in food service. Our staff, our camp staff, our summer camp and school-year camp employees are eligible to receive a scholarship if they're full-time employees or seasonal employees to be considered for the ninety percent and fifty percent scholarship. And we will discuss scholarships in more detail. Yes, ma'am?
I'm not sure if you want me to ask this now or when you discuss scholarships.
Either way, you could, we can start now and if I know there's a slide coming, I'll just go jump to it.
So the full-time employees receive a ninety percent scholarship and the seasonal receive a fifty percent scholarship. We had the conversation... I think that's excessive.
Okay.
So I looked at the EDP. There was something we did with them and their employees get a discount, but it's not like that significant. So based on, what's the basis of ninety percent is what I'm trying to ask.
Okay. So as I understand it, summer camp staff are there twenty-four-seven and away from their families twenty-four-seven, which is slightly different. I understand the employee EDEP discount because I'm an employee and I had children in EDEP. And that's just a school-day program. I think also it has become increasingly difficult for positions such as the nurse at summer camp because that's asking a high-demand field, an RN, to come to camp for that OPS... Salary or pay. And sort of as a perk or to entice being able to fill and have that required RN at each of the sessions, an incentive would be having that partial scholarship. I think the full-time employees, as I understood the rationale for the ninety percent scholarship, is that they are away from their families for eight weeks of the summer for twenty-four hours a day during camp. So this is certainly, as are all of the items that we'll be presenting to you this afternoon, what we want your feedback and guidance on and can adjust to make it mirror, for example, the EDEP employee discount, if that's what the board prefers. We're here to get that guidance from you.
I'll let you go ahead and continue and I'll wait. Thank you.
Absolutely. This is just a bulleted list and not even exhaustive of all of the things that happen during summer camp. Of course, mostly outside things and unplugged things, which as a parent, I really appreciate a lot of those individual things that you can do and learn to get better at, but also a lot of team-building and esprit de corps-type activities. In terms of recruiting campers, I think one of the better recruitment tools we have is making sure that all of our second and fifth-grade students are exposed to camp. We also encourage and enjoy having parent chaperones come to both the second and the fifth-grade trips to really see camp for themselves and see how it can be safe and fun for their children. The Camp Crystal teachers are really wonderful ambassadors in terms of recruiting campers, in terms of explaining what summer camp is like and answering all of their questions. And in fact, on the fifth-grade overnight trip, on the last overnight, as one of the campfire activities, they also talk to the students about scholarships to encourage them. And of course, we don't know to the extent fifth graders are always aware of the, you know, financial situation in their families, but we also want to be sure that all of the teachers who are out there are aware of it. So if they know of a child that was really excited about or would benefit from going to camp, that they could help us get that message home to the families and help us recruit campers who would be really interested in that opportunity. And of course, the regular website, social media, and other ways that we advertise camp in general. There is a weighted lottery for how campers are placed each session. Listed here in all of the steps, basically, if you're a returning camper asking for the same session as you've already applied for, is a priority registration. If you've camped there before but you wish to go to a different session, that's another priority. Siblings of returning campers, second-grade campers and their siblings, and then last-year campers' siblings who've attended in the past, other returning campers, and then new campers, sort of in the weighted lottery. And I believe there is gonna be a slider. It might be, actually, I think it's one of your handouts. So I wanna just call your attention to, this was a more recent question, and so I have information about the last two years. I think in your packet, you'll find something that shows... I have too many papers. How many of each... Okay, well, that was, yeah. Did you get something called Camp Crystal Lake application slash enrollment numbers? Looks like this. Okay.
Wait a minute.
It looks like this. This was really, literally hot off the presses. So the first, so this is just reiterating that the maximum number of spots per session is a hundred-and-sixty-four. And then there are six total sessions, four of them are one-week sessions and two of them are two-week sessions. So Camp Twenty-three, the first group, if you will, applications are still open for camp. So this is who has applied already. But on the second session here is by category, how many applicants there were for the summer of Twenty-two.
Ms. Wise?
Ma'am.
In this weighted, I was gonna ask you a question about that.
Yeah.
Out-of-county folks could bump someone if they've been in the county, if they've camped previously.
In the current system, yes, ma'am. So that's something that if the board wants to change and make that a whole nother category or have it not even be open to out-of-county is something that...
Okay.
Oh, go ahead. What was the purpose of out-of-county? I mean, why was that even... Why are students considered? It's a... Sorry, is the school board camp paid for taxpayer money?
So I think that's a great question and I can't answer the origins of that because it predates me. So I am newer to being in the...
Ms. Abbott, are you asking why do we allow out-of-county students to come in at all? Okay. All right, yeah. So Ms. Rock, Dr. Rockwell, you have a question?
So my understanding is that we have a waitlist. We have more campers apply than we have slots, correct? As a school district, I think that our goal should be to provide this summer camp experience to as many students as we possibly can. And so, in my opinion, prioritizing campers who've previously gone is the exact opposite of what should be happening. I would like to see new campers who've never attended being given top priorities so they get the opportunity to come. I also would like... I, I also would like to look into the consideration of going to all one-week sessions so that we could serve more students.
Okay. Are there, while we're on that topic, would, would other of you, like, while we're on this slide, if it fits for you, I think it makes sense for us to then get everyone's feedback on the weighted lottery system. So just to make sure I understood you, Dr. Rockwell, you would prefer almost a flip in where new campers are actually running first in the lottery to try to expose more students to camp in general versus a returning camper?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've heard from families who apply year after year after year and never get in because the slots are filled by returning campers and their siblings.
Or their siblings.
And legacy people, yeah. Legacy out-of-counters. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure about that one, but I, the one, I'm okay with it if we don't wait, wait, add wait or priority to someone who's camped in the past, but I don't think, if we have a waitlist, I don't think a person, I would not want an out-of-county camper to take up a spot from a person, a camper that is inside the county.
Okay.
A resident, so I think that should be-
I see a lot of nodding, so that seems to be-
I don't totally agree with that.
Okay.
Turn your mic on, Dr. McNeely. Turn, turn your mic on, please.
I said, I don't totally agree with that because I've been on both sides of the coin. My children both attended summer at Camp Crystal and enjoyed it immensely, but when my children, one of my children, I decided to send to Minnesota for a summer camp, and if that had been the situation, then she wouldn't have ever gotten in. They had a weighted, well, they didn't call it weighted lottery, but back in the day, there were opportunities for other folk to be able to attend. And I think about some of our children, and I know we're talking taxpayer amounts here, and we're very concerned about that, but I would not want to have a completed closed door for a child who really needs to have this experience. If we could allow, maybe say, we would only allow ten children from out, I don't know, but I hate for the whole door to be closed, especially for some children in some other areas where they live.
Dr. McNeely, the camp problem, I, um-
I know. Go ahead.
Your camp in Minnesota was not school, it was probably a private camp?
It might have been a private-
But so, I think that-
Yeah, it's been so many years.
I know. So I think that is like where my children went to Camp Crystal and all, and, but the difference is, is this is a, a school district resource, and we're using taxpayer dollars. And to me, I think we have to have a different level of care and consideration and fiduciary duty when we're dealing with taxpayer resources, like, you know, like the, the argument that was being made at Duval about the school, the people using the school, they were saying that they shouldn't use it for free. So we, we can't, this camp is being subsidized and general fund dollars are being used to operate it. And I think first priority should always go to children of taxpayers in Alachua County.
And that's why I started off by saying, I don't totally disagree or I'm not all in agreement with what my other colleagues are saying, and I stand on that. Thank you.
Tina, I mostly agree with that. My only question would be, do we want to make an exception for the children or child or children of the nurse since we're legally required to have one, and it's really hard to get that person? Because they're, they're twenty-four-seven for a week, is that right? So if they can bring their child, I imagine that's a big selling point.
So are they bringing their child every week or one week?
So, Arx, previously, I think we had nurses, and I am not the definitive historic historian for Camp Crystal, where nurses would go for longer or stay for more sessions, but because there's such high demand and the salary is so much higher for them to stay in the hospital or the doctor's office or the private practice, wherever they are, that I think it is what you're saying, that it's enticing to do it because it's fun, it's different from the grind of your regular job. And then if you had a child camper age, that would be definitely a perk.
So like, I'm, I'm wrestling with what you just said because in one breath, y'all told me, like, when I asked about the council pay, it was, oh, they'll do it if we paid them for free. So it's almost like we're willing to exploit one group of employees, but we're making accommodations for another group. And that makes me feel really, I don't, that doesn't sit well with me, but, Mr. Relling?
I, I was just gonna mention in our discussions previously over the last, whatever, it's been about a year, six months, one of, one of the pieces that's been mentioned to us in terms of the, the current, the, the, the current staff receiving the discount is a lot, in most cases, they're actually staying with their parent, so they're not taking up a slot in a cabin. So I just wanted to mention that because that's something that hasn't come up, but that is, is my understanding is how it's kind of been handled, is like, if you're the nurse, your daughter or son comes with you, they stay in your cabin, so they're not kind of taking up a slot from anyone else, but there is a charge associated, but I just want to mention that as a, as a point.
So I'd like to throw this out. Some of those operating-type things that are happening like that, those need to be documented and those, run those by the board so we can kind of see if we all agree upon that. But all of this, like, it could be this way one summer, and two years later, it'd be something different, and the next time, it's something else or whatever. So I think that's part of what, what I've been pushing for is to get the operating procedures and all. We, the board needs to see those because that's kind of oversight, I think. So I can't, I'm not making a decision on it or judgment on it, giving you an opinion on it one way or the other, but I do want, I think, the norms and habits, procedures, whatever they've been doing out there, that we need to, we need to know about that.
I, I think we both agree completely with that.
So you're working on policies and procedures. Now, there weren't, there weren't any, you have some now, or you're working on those?
So I think the plan for today, to, to kind of answer that question, obviously, we reported in, I think, April a little bit, and then here, here's a follow-up.
Pull your mic up, pull your mic up, because it's just not picking up on you, I don't know why.
My laptop's probably in the way. You know, we met in April, had a kind of a preliminary discussion, we did a lot of fact findings, spent a lot of time at camp, kind of trying to understand the operations as they have existed since whenever, nineteen fifty, and kind of bringing forth some of these scenarios and ideas and past practice to the board with the thought being, receiving feedback from the board on, this is what, essentially, this is what, this is kind of the way we have operated, but certainly want the board feedback on what they ex, they expect from staff in terms of how they think it needs to operate, because it has probably not been looked at closely in a long time.
So since the last time we met about this, in April, we have and are gonna be sharing with you information on separating out the summer and school year staffing costs. We are charging the camp for summer utilities. We have reviewed the expenditures to ensure that personal services were not paid for by camp. We have identified a funding source for scholarships that we do want you to weigh in on currently. Scholarships are funded from the out-of-county fees and also donations, and I have a, a slide on that where it's broken down. Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'll let you finish that slide.
And we have developed a scholarship application and selection process that we will share with you. In fact, you have a copy of the application, but in, we'll refer to that specifically in just a moment.
So I, I have a concern to my colleagues with the out-of-county fees being used to fund scholarships. The city of Gainesville, they have an out-of-city fee, like, for their parks and rec, and that fee is, I'm gonna say like a premium that they charge county residents or anyone who does not pay city of Gainesville taxes for using those services because there is some fixed cost and all that the city is paying to support parks and rec. And so I don't think that, I don't think it's prudent to use the out-of-county fee, whatever it's charged, to award scholarships, which we haven't had a policy on in the past, to in-county residents or out-of-county residents. So that's something I, I'm hoping that we can all agree upon so that we can give direction to staff that that practice is discontinued. And I think we need to know how, what's the basis of the out-of-county fee, because it was thirty dollars, I was told, then it was proposed to go to sixty dollars, and now I hear it's seventy-five dollars on here. So I'm just trying to get, like, wrap my hands, heads around, like, is it just an arbitrary fee? Like, in April, I asked for, for, for information on the cost of delivering camp to a camper. And there, I've worked this out in an accounting textbook, you know? But, so you know, I mean, we have a lot of data from past summers to know what it costs us with the staffing, which, how you're, you're, you're breaking it out now. They gave us some, that budget that I sent questions back on that I have. But I just think we need to boil it down. You know how many campers you have each session, how many beds, and what the cost you have to cover on that? I think we need to know what that is. And then if there's a portion of, that we want to recover for camp improvements and maintenance or to add or to, to supplement or defray the cost of operating our second and fifth grade program, that's something that the out-of-county fee could do. That's not something we're gonna give back to people. I don't know, that just doesn't make sense to me, but, so that's my, that's my guidance on, my, my, my contribution on out-of-county fees.
And for me, I think that if it were marketed right, there'd be a waiting list of just Alachua County students. And, and so I think we should discuss whether or not out-of-county students should even be admitted. All four of my kids went to Camp Crystal since second grade. My girls were counselors there when they were in college. I have a grandchild in North Carolina that would love to go, but what right does that grandchild have over kids in our public school system? And so I think we need to establish that first, and then we don't have to worry about the fees for out-of-county. And, and, and I, and I think it's a marketing thing because I've been, and as a parent of a public school kid, four of them, and I know a long time ago, it was a rush. You got to school to get those papers, to fill them out, and you expressed them to Camp Crystal, I mean, to make sure your child got in a slot. I was privileged to be able to do that. And, and I know, I was at a charter school, my kids never even knew about it because we couldn't go out for second grade. We went out for fifth grade, and I was just trying, you know, I had a teacher there who had kids in public school, and she'd feed the information to the parents. So it's not, it's not marketed well. And so if you're, if you're not in the inn at school or at the right time, or you just don't know these things, you don't live in a community where they're talked about ad nauseam, you don't have that opportunity. So if it's marketed well, every, there'd be a waitlist for Alachua County students to go.
There is a waitlist. I just think, and it, folks, what you say, bigger, and I, I think we need to expand. I don't think it's equitable how it is because there's just, there's just that little, as you say, there's small pockets of people. Yes, Dr. Rockwell?
Have we looked at other funding sources, like grants, like children's trust, maybe some Wild Spaces, public places, although the camp is located out of county, so I don't know how that would work? But just are there other things that we've looked at for funding our scholarship program rather than-
Children's trust, you can't, this is a school property and-
Okay.
-the district can't get children's trust money.
So, so I can, I guess, partially answer that. There's been a lot of discussion around our various business partners, and we all know who those folks are that contribute significantly to schools, to the district in general. So I think that's probably a, a, definitely an avenue that we need to pursue. I think when we were working through the summer of Twenty-two, which was last year, obviously, we did not have time to develop those relationships and request the funds and then award the scholarships. So the out-of-county fees were like, kind of like the natural funding source that we could find in terms of how those fees have changed over the years. Unfortunately, with some of this stuff, I just do not have the, neither one of us have the historical knowledge on how that was developed, how it was calculated, or, and, you know, obviously changed over the years. But in terms of the timelines, when you think about April, you know, being right before camp started, that's what, you know, we identified as a funding source, at least for that camp year. Certainly doesn't have to be that way going forward. I'd love the idea of having private partners, maybe the Chamber, Florida Credit, you know, I mean, all the folks that would love to contribute, I'm sure, to the experience because the experience is amazing. I went with my daughter last December, and she still talks about it in her second-grade trip. So I do think it is, there's a lot of value to it, and I think that certainly we could leverage those relationships to provide some additional donations.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, I mean, I don't know how many out-of-county students we had, but if we're getting enough to fund multiple scholarships from seventy-five dollars a student, probably far too many, would be my guess. But, you know, Ms. Abbott was talking about her children attended camp, and it was, my husband attended Camp Crystal Lake. So I think we could, that space is emptied a lot during the school year. We could even have like an alumni gala or something, like, you know, there's, there's creative options because people in this community loved going to Camp Crystal. And if we're looking at seventy-five dollars a person, I mean, that's less than most of our event tickets to things.
And I just want to add to that, and the use of Camp Crystal, it'd be awesome to have a calendar to see exactly blocked out the days because with behavior the way it is, that could be an incentive for students who have behavior issues to have three or four days at camp. And it could be a, a good, a good, for a lot of reasons, for team building, for, I don't know. I, I just think we need to look at, at second, fifth grade, and summer camp. Maybe, maybe that's not the only way we can use that amazing piece of property.
Okay, thank you. I did, thanks to Mr. Delaney's phoning a friend over here. We will have a slide coming up that shows you how many out-of-county campers there have been over the last several years. Yeah, we have it, so it's, it's coming. Okay, so let's dig into the scholarship process a little more deeply. At this point, and really for last school year, last summer, there was a ninety percent scholarship, which the family contribution for that, that's for one week, would be fifty-four dollars and fifty cents, and there was a fifty percent scholarship where the family contribution was two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. And the rationale behind not giving a hundred percent scholarship was really hoping to ensure that anyone who received a scholarship would, like, show up on game day, so they had a little skin in the game, so that a bed didn't go unused. Of course, we'll take feedback from you on that. The, and that scholarship percentage and the dollar amounts on this slide are based on the current tuition rate. The scholarship form, which I also gave you, is linked here, it's a hyperlink. This is the scholarship form. It is available online, but paper copies are provided to the schools, and it is here that we collect information about the size of the family. And we do ask a family who receives either SNAP or TAMP funds or is part of the foster care system, that's an automatic qualifier for the ninety percent scholarship. We collect that information. There is also a place for them just to write a little statement. Of course, this isn't really, again, this is more of that expressing having a really vested interest in wanting to be part of camp. And for the first time last year, we also added a page where they could let us know if they needed transportation because it is quite a distance away from a lot of where our students live. If they needed transportation, we just asked that the pickup place for them would be at their zoned school. And then with, if there were remaining funds from the out-of-county fees or donations, based on how many scholarships were given out, and a family indicated a need for a sleeping bag or laundry basket, water bottles, those funds could be used to provide camping gear for students who may not have that, our scholarship students. So that's a copy of the scholarship application. It's also linked in the presentation.
I have a question. So it has apply for ninety or fifty percent. So if they applied for ninety, are you looking at the information down here to see if they qualify for the ninety?
Yes.
And then would they be rewarded the fifty percent otherwise, or?
It could be, depending on the size of their family and their income, and, and the rest of the applicant's size of family and income.
Do we, sorry, do we have somewhere published the-
Do we, sorry, do we have somewhere published the criteria for the ninety and fifty percent, so that families know which they're applying for? You know, like, the income level by family size, and, you know, automatically if you get TANF or SNAP, or if you're a child in foster, if you're a foster parent? So they know. And, and also, you know, do we automatically give the scholarship to every family that qualifies, or are we then narrowing it down?
So I can tell you, of course, this is the first year we had a scholarship committee that involved multiple groups of people. And, you know, we, we looked at, you know, the stack of scholarship forms, and we didn't necessarily have really hard and fast income requirements. What we noticed pretty quickly is you could have a family with an income which, you know, you would consider wouldn't need necessarily a scholarship, but they have seven kids. So we kind of, in a way, took the entirety of the scholarship applications, all the direct certification, TNF, all the people who are receiving public assistance were automatically approved. And then we went individually, right, for ninety, and then we went individually and kind of ranked them based on, with the group, which ones we felt was worthy of a ninety percent or a fifty percent. But there was no real specific hard and fast rules. We did look at the federal poverty level, similarly to what they use for the extended enrichment program, as kind of like a guideline, if you will, because they have, you know, income, and then the number of dependents within that, so it kind of tells you where they would lie on that, on that scale.
I think we need to have a written procedure for how those are assigned, you know? The federal poverty guidelines vary by family size, so, you know, it does take into account family size. But whatever we use, it needs to be in writing so that the families can see it, so that they have some idea going in whether they'll qualify. And so that, especially if we seek out private donors for this, they can see who their money is going to. And so that if there's an issue where a family says, hey, I couldn't go to camp because you didn't give me a scholarship, and I know this other family, and I know that they make less than me, and you gave them a scholarship, like, we, I mean, our legal staff would probably say, like, you need to have a procedure for this, right?
Well, not our legal staff, but our accounting firm did, and it was in an annual, it was in an issue in there, that we lacked a policy. And so I agree with you, and I suggested in April that we use the EDP scale or the free and reduced lunch. I don't, I, I am very uncomfortable with what you just said about there's an income level, and somebody can have seven kids, and it looks like they should not be able to afford camp, but they may have circumstances. But, and all the other programs and things that we do, where we're doling out assistance, they have income, they have, it's written, it's published, and it's known, it's, yeah, and I, I just, we got into an issue, and, and I think we, I've been asking for a policy to be brought forth for us. We have a Neola thing, but I think the EDP, we have something in writing for EDP, like, you got, it's not, that's not done all willy-nilly, so I don't think it's unreasonable to have something for this.
You probably need to have something, because if I was looking at this, this is, it's just open-ended. To me, it leaves open for some type of liability, as Ms. Rockwell said. But to be clear, if you followed something, we can say, well, this is the actual scale or whatever we went by to make sure that person was.
The TNF food stamps, SSI, a child's getting that part of foster care, to that, to me, straight off rip, like, we know that those are children that are living, that are there. But I, I think, and I think we need to have more of a push. The first document that I read, that was emailed to me by Dr., Mr. Andrew, had a lot of us telling the students to tell their parents, and that is one way, but a second grader and a fifth grader, man, I, I mean, come on, really? Yeah. So I think, and again, I'm, I'm, I really want us to embrace doing, to being very transparent, and having a policy that is equitable, and that is applied fairly, and is applied the same way every year consistently. And I, I think we lack that, because that's what is in this, was in the audit report, and that's something that we responded to. And we need to be able to say, and, and show, like, I asked for a list of everybody who got a scholarship, to be able to see that in the criteria by which they were awarded, that I haven't seen that for this past summer. And to me, if we have donors that come, we should be able to say, we gave fifteen scholarships to students whose family received some type of public assistance, or part of the foster care system, or whatever. And then we had these other income bases, and they fit, they met federal poverty guidelines, or they met these guidelines, we're in here, that we'll say that they need. But camp, camp is, is, is a wonderful experience, and unfortunately, it has only been experienced by a very small sector of folks who have the, have the funds to be able to do it. Like, I just think we need to be really consistent and nail that down, and this is another year ago. I'm hoping, I haven't seen the policy and what you got, what you just outlined, I've asked for it, so I really would like to see that in writing, and the board be able to put that. Because when it goes in this, guys, in the audit report, that's coming to us, and folks are going to be looking at us like y'all aren't doing that right. So I'm not, I want to get this right going forward.
Are there a certain number of scholarships that are for each session, or how do you determine when you're going to give a scholarship?
That's a good question, and that goes back to when I went over the weighted lottery system. It's a, like, moving target as to how many beds are open each session, based on the demand from the returning camper who wanted the same session, a returning camper who wanted another session, a sibling of a returning camper. So let's just say session two is the very most popular session, and every single kid that went last year wants to come back. There wouldn't be, unless a kid had aged out of camp, there wouldn't have been many seats open for scholarships. So it depends on, on the session, how many scholarship slots are open. And there is a, a way for the scholarship applicant to show preference for their session as well.
Can I make one other suggestion? Under no circumstances do we award more scholarships than we have that's in the fund. Not out-of-county fees funds, donations. Like, scholarships awarded should not exceed the balance of donations. I've known in the past, you've been using out-of-county fees, but I think going forward, there's an agreement that we're not doing that anymore. But scholarships awarded should not exceed the amount of donations that are on hand from whatever the source, be it parents of campers, like y'all told us before, that parents of campers or friends of the camp make donations, or however they come in. We should not be awarding scholarships that exceed more than what we have in that fund. And that fund, those donations should be accounted for in a separate account, so they're easily identified, readily identified. They are now.
They are now. And I can only speak to '22, because it's the first time I was on the scholarship committee, but there were not more scholarships given out than there were, and we did use out-of-county fees and donations. So I'm hearing the guidance going forward is no longer using out-of-county fees. So right now, until we identified another funding source or found other benefactors, there would only be as many scholarships awarded as were in the donation line, and that's all kept separately now.
And given that there might not be enough funds for every kid who qualifies, in this written policy you bring to us, we need to delineate priorities. So are we putting foster children top priority for scholarships? And then kids who get SNAP and TANF? And then, you know, like, what is going to be the priority order for that? Also needs to be in that policy.
I think that's something we'd like to hear from you to weigh in as well, as we bring that to you, if you have a preference for how to wait, because all of those are all good candidates to me, and I would.
So a good place to look would be, the Early Learning Coalition has, you know, priority procedures for who gets their school readiness scholarships, and foster children automatically get the highest level, automatically. So like, to me, foster children would be the top priority. I don't know what my colleagues think.
I agree with that.
That's unbiased, or one that's?
I mean, because basically, you're paying for camp. I have always, as a parent. If I can afford it, I'd have to pay. I didn't have a scholarship, but we want to make sure we're giving the opportunity to kids who can afford it as well. So I agree with that.
If I may interrupt on this discussion, just to share with our school board as well. So the policies 6152 and 6152.01, that Neola has, ones on student fees, fines, and charges, there's two versions of that, and then one's on waiver of school fees. Those we do plan to bring to the board, but in talking with Neola, what they've shared with us is those two policies were written for all sixty-seven districts, not with the thought of a camp in mind, because we're the only district, of course, in the state that owns and operates a camp. So what they've suggested to us is that we have a separate policy or policies that we reference in 6152 and 6152.01, and that those specific policies are written for Camp Crystal. And Neola, of course, will help us with that. They have requested some additional information from us that we're going to provide to them, and some of this information we're collecting today, too, that we can apply to them. I mean, that we can share with them and have them apply that to some new policy for us. So we've asked them for assistance in drafting said policy or policies, and we're going to give them information they've requested and have them review that for us. So, Ms. Turney, did you have anything else to add to that?
Just for clarity, that those two policies that the superintendent referenced, specifically in Neola, said those do not apply to camp. Those are for, you know, schools, for materials like books and things like that, educational things. They, they aren't going to be used for summer camp. Now, the field trips and things like that, that's a different story. They did say that we should have separate policies, they agree, as for camp, as for the scholarship process and other pieces of camp. So they are waiting on information. I, I requested it, and we're trying to gather it to get to them to look at. I did want to let the board know, based on board request, we are planning to bring the two policies, the 6152 and 6152.01, earlier than we're going to have the others ready. So when the superintendent said that these, those two policies can reference the Camp Crystal ones, it would be, they would be amended later. If we bring them and they get through, once we're ready to workshop and bring the Camp Crystal policies forward, we would probably tag along the other two to put in amendments of, you know, for summer camp, you know, scholarships, fees, you know, whatever it is, please see these policies. But they just don't exist right now, so when we bring these two, it's not going to have that reference in it yet.
Ms. Turney, is there a way for the board to have access to Neola's board docs that has all of their policy options available for us to view, like, before you've, you're planning to bring them to us? Because right now, if you have a policy that the district staff wants to bring to us, we get that in our materials as preparation. But I can't see what's on the table from Neola, and I would like to be able to see that.
Sure. So actually, as Ms. Sartin recently did, she came to my office and met with one of my legal assistants, Ms. Talbot, who walked her through, showed her what we get from Neola, what we actually have in our policies. It's very different, because we, what we've done a lot of times is, I mean, we have a lot of policies, and some of those policies are exactly Neola. Some of those policies, we've taken from Neola, but we already had policies, so we just changed language to make sure things were in there, so they don't always look the same. Some of the drafts that they give us can be twenty pages, but we've pared it down based on options they give us to maybe two pages. And so she, if you wanted to, maybe some of the time, before we start giving you all of that stuff, it's, it's a lot. She explained our process, what we do, and if there's ever a policy that you'd like to see everything Neola gave us, we absolutely can hand that over. She's also keeping a list of policies that we've either held on or passed on, that we are going to be providing at each workshop, I believe, to show you guys what we're not bringing that Neola has sent and recommended. As far as the access to that, I would have to look into for a login. We may be able to give that to you, I, I just don't know.
Yeah, I don't necessarily want, like, all the legal briefs they gave you that back up their new policy recommendation. I just want access to their board docs, so I can look at what policies they've written, so that as we're considering things, I can just quickly see what all the options were.
And yes, we, I'm sorry, we can, possibly, and, and like I said, I have to look into how we would get another, you know, password and everything set up. I don't think that would be an issue, but I would still recommend maybe meeting with Ms. Talbot, so she can explain, when you look at them there, it looks very different than what she does. She takes them and spends, I can't even tell you how much time, making the edits to fit in with what we're used to and what we have. But I will, we'll look into that.
So, thank you, Ms. Turney. What I did, Dr. Rockwell, after the orientation, I did spend some time with her, and what I thought would be useful, or what I found useful for myself, was that there's a summary sheet that is applied, provided to us in the notebook before each section, that I've asked her to put all the policies in there, the ones, like, pretty much like they do now, but if there's some that they're not recommending, that they're recommending we hold on, for some reason, to have a section for holds, or to have a section for not applicable to us, for whatever reason. It's just a more summary, because it was very voluminous. I mean, it would be, if she was to give that to all of us, it'd probably be a ream of paper. I mean, a couple reams of paper, because it's like, a lot, like, she printed out this thing. So I met with her, and she, we went through a couple of things, and I think the next update is what is, she's, when she gets them, because they don't get updates, she told me all the time. It's just periodic, that she would provide us with this in this format to all of us, not just to me, but she provided to all of us, so that we could see what they're proposing to bring forward, what will be held, what's not applicable, and, and that way, so that we're not just getting a whole bunch. Because the policy review notebooks, it's like a five-inch binder already, when they bring it to us with the details. So I think that's the, I felt when I left out of the office, that was a happy medium versus of, from where we are now. That's an improvement from where we are now. But if there's something else you want, you can make an appointment and go in, and maybe we could see. You may come up with something different, but that's what I thought would be best.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make an appointment with her, but I, I do want to explore getting that login, so.
Yes, and like I said, if you set the appointment with her, she can show you what it looks like in there, and you can make sure you'd want it, but she also is the one, I think, that would get you set up with a login. So all of that maybe can be done together.
I do have a potential, I wouldn't say suggestion necessarily, but an alternative to having like a specific policy for Camp Crystal. We could also bring, as we do when the rates change for camp, we bring that before the board, similar to EDP, but we could, in addition to having the fee change, go into a lot of detail on a lot of the stuff that we're talking about today, in terms of what are we doing with employees? How are we rating scholarships? How do we award scholarships? Then we have a board-approved document that, to, to be honest, is much easier to change for the board and for staff than a policy which takes, you know, up to three months to do. So that's, just another alternative would be for us to bring a packet that includes all of the procedural kind of things that relate to the camp, camp fees and scholarships. That's not necessarily something that would have to specifically go into policy. Just wanted to mention that as an option.
I like that option. I don't think, I don't, I wasn't asking for the fees to be specific in the policy, because I understand the rulemaking process, but we just got to have something. Like, right now, we have nothing, and you all had something that you used for summer '22. We still haven't seen that. And so, and then the, the fee increases or fee changes, those need to make, you need to make sure they come to the board, because they haven't come to the board in the past. So those changes need to make sure they come. Yes, ma'am?
Just to, to update you, based on what Mr. Rel is saying, when we spoke with Neola about this, about a week, in the, last week, early last week, and, and he wasn't there for that, we did talk about maybe not having the exact specifics of everything in there, but talking about the fees and, and costs and everything, so that it doesn't have to go through rulemaking every time we make a change, but that there would be some procedures that go along with it, but that they're, they'll tweak some language, put it together, and then you can review that, the language of the policy.
Kind of what I have in mind is something similar to EDP. You know, we have a framework for that, and then...
That has it all laid out, all of those procedures?
And then, when the fees change, you guys, just like, I think it was last year sometime, '21?
Two years, but yes, it hasn't been that long.
Yeah. Accurate. Yeah, I can remember it came forward. That's how, why I could remember that there was something on there that stated how the employee discounts. So that's not as a part of a written policy to go through rulemaking. It was something that came back, but there is something that's in place. And so what I'm trying to get to is what was in that audit report. Because we had nothing in, in June of twenty-one, and so at the fiscal year twenty-one. And so that's what I'm pushing to get through. If it's something written by Neola, or if it's something written in-house that Neola approves, I'm okay with that.
We should be able to get you a draft of that very soon. And this, all this feedback will help us draft one that's easier for you to give us feedback on because we'll have gotten a lot of it ahead of time. Okay, I did also just want to mention a potential funding source that's not forever, but Dr. Boker has been working on several of our, they're like reauthorized ESER for out-of-school time that are specifically for after-school, weekends, holiday breaks, or summer. And the turnaround time is very short. I think those have come to you in, in the board meeting, I hope. If not, I'm going to find out about that for you. But those are times that are challenging for us to find our employees to man special learning opportunities or enrichment opportunities. So she did, we did talk about setting aside money for summer enrichment for students. It would fit in with the scholarships to Camp Crystal, at least for, I think, one of them. This, it's just for this summer, and there's another one that's this summer and next summer. So if we're no longer going to use the out-of-county fees in the short term while we're working on developing partnerships with businesses or other benefactors, that could be something that we could use.
I'm gonna hold my comment, I had something. But, go ahead. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait.
Okay, so we've kind of talked a little bit about this. The scholarship committee for last summer was made out of representatives from the curriculum, from finance and equity departments that reviewed the scholarship applications. And then currently, as stated, we use the out-of-county camper fee and the, and the donations to fund all the scholarships. Those, if those continue, which they're not going to continue to be the funding source, it would vary according to available funds. Campers can request the scholarships as soon as the application for summer camps open. And in fact, we encourage those families to go ahead and register for this desired session they want. So while they wait to hear about the scholarships, because we have a window for registrations for camp as well as for the scholarships. And if based on their family's schedule, they could only, if they were to receive a scholarship, go to a specific session or two, we would want to know that. So the scholarship applications are due at the end of January for the following summer camp. And they're available for only one week. So if someone wanted to attend a two-week session, they would be responsible for the fees for the second week.
And, and I say that if they can afford the second week, they don't need a scholarship.
Right, and we talked about that, but maybe like if they're church, I, I mean, if they had a way, yes. I mean, understood.
I, I agree with you. If you can fork over and you can, if you have the means to come up with it for that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, too, because if you're getting...
Requested?
Yeah, if you're getting outside funding, then use it for one week. And again, I honestly think all the sessions should be one week and then we can see more kids.
I mean, you're seeing the same, well, I see what you're saying, you're saying different kids, but the, yeah.
Right, instead of one group of kids for two weeks, you get two groups of kids, twice as many kids.
I'm going to go back to the ESER funding. I just feel like, I love summer camp and I want kids to be able to go. But I think if we can use ESER funding in any way to improve what's happening in our schools, that's where we need to put the emphasis for that.
I mean, there was some talk when we first got ESER of using it as like a behave, to take the kids out there to having some behavior challenges, to do team building, sort of what you mentioned earlier. That was in our original grant. And I see in here that was kind of in the revision, that's not in here, is what she said.
And I think that's awesome, because I'd already said something a few minutes ago, because when you're improving behavior in a classroom, then, then learning is going to be improved, so.
So that is still being piloted at two of our middle schools. It's just not necessarily recruiting for summer camp. So the, the ESER funding set aside to do that team building and for students who are struggling with their behavior is happening. But Dr. Edwards asked it not to be tied to a recruitment strategy because it really isn't that.
Summer is just as important, that's when they get in.
I'm sorry?
Summer is just as important.
But I also think if we had a calendar, we'd see there's time throughout the school year that, that they could go out there and, and...
That's what they're doing.
Yeah, and it could be more structured toward those students with team building and other, exactly.
With the, with the ESER funds you were proposing using for this, you said that they're specifically for out-of-school programs?
Yes.
Does that include like an intensive summer reading program?
In fact, that's what most, I mean, that's what we're doing. But, so let's say you fly a sale camp and kids go to that, but their parents work and sale is only until noon. So Dr. Boker wrote in enough that they could participate then in EDEP in the afternoon, which isn't strictly academic or enriching, although it is building social skills and some things that students need.
But it keeps them in the, it keeps them in the academic program because their, because their parent is working. So that I can agree with, but if to use ESER funds for scholarship, I'm, I'm not...
Yeah, I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is, do we have ESER funds that we don't have a program for that have to be spent or we lose them? Like, we shouldn't, but I'm saying like that's the only way I'd be okay using them for this, is if they have to be spent this summer and we, you know, say we don't have enough kids enroll in our summer reading program, or something like that.
Right, so obviously at this point, we've al, we've fully allocated both, all three rounds. The first round, ESER one is sunsetted, but ESER two and ARP, they've been fully allocated. We continue to make adjustments as circumstances change and priorities change. But in terms of them being allocated, at this point, the funds have been allocated.
Yeah, then in that case, I agree with my colleagues, they need to be used for things that, that move the needle.
So I think you asked earlier how many out-of-county campers, so this just goes back to twenty-eighteen. With, and it also shows the, the way the out-of-county camper fee has changed slightly. I think Mrs. Sartin made reference to this. So in twenty-eighteen, it was sixty. I don't know how that was arrived at, and I also don't know what was the thought process behind changing it to seventy-five, but that's where it is and has been since then. I think there's been discussion on if that's the right number. I think depending on, I'm not sure I have a final understanding on, are we accepting out-of-county campers, period? Because if we're not, then there would not even be a need for an out-of-county fee. So this also shows the donations each year and then the total available funds for scholarships. And then the next slide shows you how many scholarships have been awarded since twenty-sixteen. Of course, there was no camp in the summer of twenty-twenty and the value of those scholarships. And last year was our first year of the ninety percent and fifty percent scholarship. And of the forty-five, twenty-two were ninety percent and twenty-three were fifty percent.
So Ms. Wise, I think the priority being for Lautre County students, but I think it would be wise to have an out-of, out-of-county fee because if we had, if there was an opening and we had an out-of-county student that wanted to apply to come. It's versus to, it's better to give the spot to an out-of-county versus not get any revenue at all from it, if they're willing to come. So I, I, but I don't think that, I don't care how long they've been coming, legacy or not, that they should bump a tax paying, yes.
Just so we understand, I want to make sure I understand what I'm hearing. So want to make sure we're filling any applicants from a lot of taxpayers, like all of us. Taxpayers from Lautre County first, and then if there are available slots beyond that that have not been filled, then we would look to out-of-county.
That's what I would say, suggest.
So then how many beds would we reserve for scholarships? Just only the number of scholarships that donations at this time could cover?
What's your scholarship balance now? See, that's, that's, I, I can't, I don't, I don't want to commit to, we're not using out-of-county fees for that, but I was told that, I recall it said that folks made donations to the scholarship fund.
Uh, I'm going to go back a slide. So this is a slide that just sort of gives you a sense of the percentage of out-of-county fees collected compared to donations, year to year. So the out-of-county fees are, you know, double, except for twenty-twenty-one. They're double or more.
So right now, it looks like the average, we would say you could start out playing with five thousand dollars. And then if you got more and there was someone later in the summer that qualified.
Yeah, it looks like twenty-twenty-one is probably the donations from twenty-twenty and twenty-one.
Oh, you're right. Probably. So if for the summer of twenty-three, I want to make sure that we get it right, the scholarships will only be funded by donations. So we'll say that would be ten or twelve campers this year. So then after that, the priority is all of the in-county campers. And then if there are any beds, out-of-county campers.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we, like as a group, have thoughts on the lottery system? Is it just me who wants to prioritize new campers? That could be just me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not married to that one. I mean, it's a, it's a thought, but I'm not married to it. I'm not, I, I, I'm okay with folks, returning folks. I mean, I just, I don't think that, I think we need to make sure we're servicing taxpayer children. And I'm sure we're going to have all types of things where folks' grandchildren, like Dr. McNeil's grandchildren come and she's going to register them for camp, but they're not... I just had to use you for it, I had to call you.
It will be, at least in this first year, a, a very big reduction in the number of scholarships as we sort of reset and explore other funding options.
Okay, kind of jumping into some of the financial information. And again, this is going to be a little bit of a review for board members that were here in April. But we did take some time this summer and spring to really separate financially the school year program, which is an educational program, where we're sending our second and fifth graders from the summer program, which should be standalone, fee-driven program. So you can see what we've done is, you know, when you think obviously through the calendar, the school year is, or the summer is essentially a three-month period. We have, you know, June, July and August. We don't really have campers that come for our, the school year program until September. So what we've done is charged the twenty-five percent, which is the three months of all of the twelve months employee salaries, the camp pays for that. Any of the permanent staff that's there during the school year is paid by the district. And again, those permanent staff during the school year are serving our students that are coming in, the fifth and the second grader. So I just, just wanted to review, just to remind everyone that we did completely bifurcate those two. They're completely separate in every way I could think financially to separate the two.
I have a question. I'm, I'm looking at the, trying to calculate the days. So how many days do, are we using the camp? So there's one day a week for second graders, or are there several days a week?
Tuesday, so Tuesday is, is for second graders. And then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is fifth graders.
So a total of four days a week, the camp is used for the school day program and...
I, I'm not a hundred percent positive. There are some, there is a little bit of our charter school, second, second graders, right? Oh, fifth, so it's the fifth, is fifth gets to come? I should have just asked you, yes. And I think a private school or two also participates. So I think they fit into the places after our elementary schools sign up for, and most of them do the whole, do their week, like the Norton week. The second graders went on Tuesday and then the fifth went on Wednesday through Friday of that week. It's Norton week.
And I will say, after reviewing the calendar, I was honestly really surprised of how busy they are during the year. There are some periods of time that, that they're down, they're not necessarily having students there. But they stay pretty busy in terms of when you look at the weeks and then you have, also have to do the cleanup and kind of the reset of the camp and things of that nature. I think we have twenty, twenty elementary? Twenty-one?
Twenty?
Twenty. I thought it was twenty-one.
So there has to be some empty weeks.
Would you go to, Ms. Dale, you're free to comment, but please come to the mic because we'll get people, citizens that tell us.
There are, like Ms. Wise said, there are some charter schools that go for some of the days. And there are private, but they pay a fee. But there are very few open times because they try to avoid testing weeks, because they can't have students out during, during testing in May. So there are some times there that are problems. And they also have maybe a week here or there that for hurricanes. You know, we've had to reschedule several schools because of being out. So they, they do have a little wiggle room, but there is not much. I've had this scheduled and they schedule pretty much, I would say, early September through April for our schools and some of the charters and privates in May. But they try to avoid May because of testing as much as possible.
And so then Camp Crystal gets income from private schools, correct?
Yeah, yes, the private schools do, do pay a fee.
Do the charter schools pay a fee?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So how's that fee calculated? What's it based on?
So I did want to jump in a little bit to the, and we're still working on the summer, the, the, during the school year program, costs associated that the district pays. And I have it broken down to a few categories. So food nutrition services, obviously we have to have a full-time food service manager there to serve the meals and snacks and dinner during the day. They, essentially in terms of how they operate, it's no different than when they're at school. If they're a CEP site, the students pay nothing. If they're a non-CEP site, which we have those listed, they pay a reduced amount per, per student. And for the second grade trip, obviously that's a day trip, so we provide a lunch and a snack. And again, these are reimbursable, just like the normal school lunch would be by the USDA. For the fifth grade trip, there's breakfast, lunch and dinner and snack. Again, still provided reimbursement from the USDA. And then we charge meals for the chaperones. We do have, if you see in one of your handouts, will be kind of like a fee schedule of, of how much, how much it is for, you know, the CEP, the non-CEP, for each of the meals. And, and the chaperones, how much the adults pay.
So that ninety thousand dollars is all from lunch fees that's in there?
Correct, so those are all reimbursables that have been submitted for our students, yep.
Oh, reimbursables for the children and the adults, payment, payment?
Yes.
Payments from the adults and reimbursement from the children. Payments from the adults and reimbursement from the children is what you're saying.
That's correct. It real, I mean, essentially, it operates like a cafeteria at a school, but just in Clay County. In terms of staffing, and again, we've, we've talked through, um, some of this, so I'll be brief. You know, we have the 12-month positions of the camp director, plant mechanic, the custodian, and executive assistant. The district pays for the non, uh, during the school year portion. For the 10-month positions, obviously, they're there only during the school year, and, uh, they are paid 100% by the district because they're 10-month employees. And we do provide, for the fifth grade trip, we provide a supplement for teachers that stay overnight, uh, with their class, and that supplement is 152 dollars for one night and 299 dollars for a two-night stay. In terms of some, some other costs, the transportation, as we mentioned before, the, the camp staff actually goes and physically picks up the students from the school and delivers them back, um, to the school after the camp day is over. So there's obviously no cost associated with that, they're already on, on staff. Uh, we do, obviously, bill, get, Camp Crystal does receive a bill from transportation for diesel fuel, and they use the summer program camp funds to pay for that fuel. So there's no district cost associated with the fuel as we're transporting, um, students back and forth. For the field trip fees, um, it's essentially, at the student level, it relates to, um, since there's no transportation cost, it really relates to the free and reduced lunch or community eligibility provision. So if you're at a CEP school, you, there, you know, your transportation's already provided, so the school doesn't have to pay for that. We're receiving reimbursement for the meals, the district's paid for the staff, so in that scenario, there's no cost. The only cost is, would be for meals at our non-CEP sites, which is Childs, Hidden Oak, High Springs, Meadowbrook, Oakview, Talbot, and Wiles. And you can see for the free, obviously, zero. Reduced is 40 cents a meal, and the full rate is $2.25. Some additional costs, utilities, we did split out the utility cost again in an effort to really separate financially in every way the summer program from the school year program. Uh, we charge the three months of utilities for electric, uh, garbage, bottle gas, for, um, September through May are paid by the district, and then the summer months are paid by the camp. Um, there's some other small, very, again, very small costs for, um, copier rentals and travel, uh, office supplies, equipment repairs, things of that nature. But the district, in terms of discretionary budget, if you will, I think we provide them $3,000 a year, and that's really to, you know, provide supplies for the summer, or for the, the school year program. Um, Caplale, the camp does require, obviously, as you would imagine, with the facility, does require some maintenance, just like all of our facilities would. And this is based on, uh, what we did last fiscal year, so we had some food service equipment replacement. Uh, one thing that comes up frequently is, are the ramps, they're made of wood, they're exposed, they rot, we have to replace them, and then some minor HVAC maintenance, safety to life, fencing, walkway, and just general maintenance items. I think that totaled around $56,000. And I did provide, in your packet, kind of like a, a s- budget summary of the district costs for the last three years. And you can kind of look at that if you so choose, but you can see those costs for the last three years. In terms of the, again, looking at last fiscal year, the district received a little over 90,000 in reimbursables from food service. The staffing costs, again, you can see 463,000, a very small amount for supplies and services, and then food utilities and Caplale. So a total, uh, revenue, a little over 90,000. Total expenses of 613, so the, like, the investment in that educational program, um, is 500, 523,000. Um, obviously, it's not, it's not fee-generated, there's no FTE generation, so there's really no funding source besides the, um, reimbursable for food service, so the cut, you know, we obviously operate in the red, and, you know, that is 520, a little over half million dollars a year for the educational program.
So have we looked into additional funding so- sources for this, like STEM grants, or perhaps renting out the facility on the weekends, something?
So we do have, you know, some stuff that we shared previously, and, um, there are some limitations somewhat that we're, uh, based on board policy and just schedules that we'll talk about. Uh, but that, there's no question, I mean, if you've been to the camp, it's amazing, it's a, would be a wonderful facility, um, to rent, so I think there's certainly some opportunity to expand that, to help offset the cost of the, the school year program.
You mentioned limita- I don't recall the limitations, could you refresh me on that? I know, so we have an onsite, um, I know, one thing I did hear, we can't serve alcohol at the, alcohol can't be on there, um, served, according to current board policy.
Correct.
So that's something that we could address. Um, what are some other limitations?
Right, so that, I mean, that's obviously the big one, because it would be a wonderful wedding.
Like a wedding venue, right.
I mean, I mean, it's beautiful out there, so, um, that, 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 actually, thank you for bringing that up without me having to say it, but that was the one, I think, that probably limits us the most. And then in terms of...
Don't be scared.
And then, you know, obviously, in terms of liability insurance, you know, that's stuff we would have to look at that could cost us additional, or likely would cost us additional in our property casualty insurance, uh, but those, you know, discussions have taken place over the last couple of years, and certainly, uh, I think those will continue.
Yeah, I guess that is something, maybe we get direction. I, I'll be at FISBIT next month, I can ask, um, about that, but like, kind of like we do at Citizens Field, if someone rents that, they have to pay for their own insurance, and there are certain limits and, for that. So that's, we, the district isn't paying for that if, like, when they, someone rented for the funerals when, during COVID, they had to, there was a policy that they had to buy and provide proof of, and it had certain limits that Mr. Jameson told them, you know, it's a standard limits.
Yep, that, two million, yep.
Yeah, I don't know what it was, I know it was several and so much stuff, so that may be something that we look into doing, but we have to look at something, that investment up there that was, um, shown to defray. That is what, you know, I mean, we're, we're putting, we're putting it in, and we're putting it in there, and they're 1.5 mils in general fund, so, I mean, I was like, oh, I didn't think about 1.5 mil, but okay. So, yeah, we have to do something else, because as I said earlier, when we, when we invest, invest, we can't invest in that, and we have a lot of children who have academic deficits that, um, and they've been doing the second grade program, so that, that, what you told me about the background knowledge, I was thinking about Morningside Nature Park. It's not, it's not Camp Crystal, but it is local.
It's really cool, though, that was one of my favorite, favorite ones growing up, and Camp Crystal, so.
Is the alcohol an issue, like, legally?
So, we, we've been looking into it, I mean, I looked, I looked into it last year. Um, this is very unique, having this property, having it be in Clay County, um, and it would not be illegal necessarily, um, but there's some obstacles and some hurdles, including with our insurance, we do get, and, and that was what our risk manager had told me, that he, he showed me a, you know, the certificate that gets signed annually that gives us a 5% discount, so there's that piece of it. Um, alcohol does not count towards the, necessarily towards the drug-free workplace piece, so we, we could potentially carve out certain things, however, you get legal opinions, I mean, we would need to talk to FISBIT about this, and when you get legal opinions of, of other folks, whether it's, you know, just within the state or outside, it, it's all very much of a, those people would not touch that, and they don't want that. Um, in other areas, they have various, um, you know, facilities, I think one area owns like a, a baseball facility of some sort, and I've talked about it with them, um, it, it's something that we could potentially bring up, but there could be some ramifications, and that could cost some, some money.
I would, I would only add to that, that there's certainly a concern, given the physical location of the site, of, um, people drinking and driving, uh, if they were to leave, and how much responsibility are school district employees going to have to police, you know, that behavior, and, um, so I think we would need to have a better sense of what the event would look like, and how it's gonna be staffed. It generates a lot of questions.
The other piece to think about, and the part that we were struggling with, I think the most, is when we run out facilities, our policies require that there be a custodian on site, I believe that was bargained, something to do with collective bargaining, but it, it's in the policies, um, and it's in our use of facilities agreement, so now, when you have employees on site, you have alcohol on site, other things like that, um, there's concerns with that, and again, that's where, you know, discussions with FISBIT, and I'm glad Mrs. Sartin is gonna be speaking with them, I think that would be a, a good thing for, um, you to talk to them about, and then potentially bring it back and see what they have to say.
Any other things you think I should bring up when I speak with them?
A lot of my questions are gonna be generated by, what would be the proposal or sort of the, the business model that we would have for the events? Are they afternoon, are they evening, are they definitely overnights? Uh, do we have staff that have gone through alcohol beverage, serving responsibility? Is it only gonna be outside catered? Depending on what the event looks like, it's gonna drive a lot of our liability concerns.
Thank you.
And I, and I'm sorry, as long as they also understand, you know, we're not talking about a, a small, you know, building facility, we're talking about a camp with a big lake, um, and a lot of hazards around as well, and so that was the other parts of the concerns that were brought.
What camp facilities would they have access to? I mean, in addition to the waterfront, there's the priming...
That would be what us, what we would restrict that, huh?
Right, uh, a- and so, and does that start to take away from the attraction of the venue?
Better look for some grants, huh, instead of renting it out?
That's what I'm hearing, but not Esser.
Not Esser, no, they, I, I mean...
I do want to say, and I'm gonna get the information to make sure I didn't speak out of turn, I think some of them are specifically around enrichment, strictly for like the opportunity gap, and one of the things I talked about with an elementary principal who lost a student this year to drowning was like swimming lessons, for instance. So, um, I'm a huge fan of all things academic, it's coursing through my veins, but there is also sometimes a time and place for some recreation that also helps round them out.
Okay, moving on to the camp side of the financial, um, system, this is the summary from the summer camp of 2022. It did take us, uh, take camp a little bit of time after September when camp ended, to kind of clear some things through, but everything's settled at this point. You can see camp revenue, obviously, primarily camper fees. There was a refund, I believe they, I forget exactly what happened, but they had to cancel, um, a weekend provider, or hurricane, another hurricane.
There was a weather event that they had to send campers home early.
Right, right. So there was a refund there, the rentals that we've discussed for the private schools, um, donation, donations and miscellaneous, so total revenue is 712,000. Uh, in terms of their expenses, staffing is obviously number one, um, supplies and food and some services, transportation, this is really the transportation for the schools, um, coming for the school year program, and then their uti- their portion of the utilities is 15,000, so, um, operated, at least for this year, has a net profit of a little over 90,000. And this is just a look at their internal accounts balance for, um, the last five years, you can see, was higher in 2019, and then, you know, without the revenues, I think we went a year without camp, um, saw those revenues and, and fund balance decrease, but it's obviously increasing at this point, um, to back up to a, probably a little bit more stable of a level.
And that amount is used for, what, summer only? Is that if there were some shortages? What, what, what is this balance here?
I apologize, I should explain that. So, uh, we have, obviously, the district budget portion, which is managed by my staff and bookkeepers at schools, et cetera. They have, much like a school, have their own checking account, that's where they're paying, um, for, you know, the food, the fuel, um, the supplies for camp. They, um, pay for staff, we, we, we actually pay the staff and they reimburse us, so they can do FRS and all those things. Uh, but this is their own internal checking balance, essentially, more or less.
How is that monitored? I mean, do you have control, do you see their account?
Sure, so that's a good question. So we have, um, obviously, we have an employee who's responsible for monitoring those internal accounts. They're also, um, audited once a year, um, as, as been brought up, but yeah, there's a lot of monitoring, I mean, there's obviously, there's only, with, you know, 41 schools and Camp Crystal, we can't look at every single transaction, of course, but we do, um, I think, a pretty good job of monitoring, and then we also have an independent auditor that goes and looks and reviews everything, does samples to make sure we're following our own policies and procedures.
So, Mr. Rela, the issue that was noted in the audit about the Camp Minder software, the limitations with that, how, what have you all done to address that?
So we're, we're able to figure out a, a way, and just to kind of explain it at like a super high level. We collect fees for camp, um, starting, I think, usually like January, February, and our fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. So what naturally happens is we're collecting funds for July that we haven't spent yet, obviously, so accounting for that properly, um, was not something that we were doing, so we, we fixed that and been able, we've had them basically categorize it, it's just by session, you know, one session's in this fiscal year, one session's in the other fiscal year, and kind of separating the two.
I, I guess, okay, so you can run a report to do that now?
Yes.
Because I would think when you're cap, when they're collecting it, it's unearned revenue? If you're getting it in January, it's not earned until then, and then when the session flips in, they come, an entry would be made to move it from unearned revenue debit, unearned revenue, credit revenue. So the balance and the unearned revenue at June 30 would be what, what was applicable to, um, subsequent sessions.
Right, was collected but not, not expend, obviously, there's no expenses.
No, it was collected, but it wasn't earned, because the camper hasn't come yet.
Right.
So I guess, I, that's, I, like, that, that finding, it was hard for me to understand, because it seemed like when we get the money in, like, it would go into the checking account, and the credit would be to unearned revenue, not revenue, it's unearned because we haven't earned it yet.
We haven't technically, correct.
It's payable.
It was really just a matter of accounting for that correctly within the internal accounts, and being able to s- support what we're reporting.
And we can do that. Now, you've che- you, your staff, you have an accountant on staff who's checked that, who has access to be able to look at that, to make sure that's done correctly?
Yes, I have, uh, uh, someone who specifically works on internal accounts and has been working with their executive assistant.
Do they have access to Camp Minder? You or someone, whatever this software name, what's it called? It's in here, I'm sorry.
So our, our financial system runs through Skyward. Um, in terms of Camp Minder, I personally do not have access, I'm not sure if my staff would necessarily have access to Camp Minder.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, I, I know, I know you all keep talking about an audit, I mean, the rest of us.
Oh, I'm sorry, so...
So I, I'm just saying, maybe we get a, I don't know what the findings, or get a copy, so as we're making a decision about Camp Crystal, what are the findings, or what do we need to make sure is in policy or whatever? I know you, I keep hearing.
So, so the two findings were the one we... So the two findings were the one we just discussed, and then not having a process in place for awarding scholarships. Those are the two findings for Camp Crystal.
So you've completely separated out the financials for school year and camp. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the school year program is running at an almost half a million budget deficit. The summer camp program is running at 90,000-ish profit.
Correct.
Is, what happens to that profit? Is it, does, do they do a general funds transfer back to the district? Like, what happens with that?
They do not transfer funds back to the general fund. It's used for program costs. They do have capital L.A. projects that come up periodically. I know that, you know, in the last couple of years, we had a new building built for housing. It could certainly be used for, to build additional cabins, which builds additional capacities, turn revenue. But they are, you know, obviously, very much just designed to be separate, in terms of how their, you know, the funds are handled. But they're, you know, obviously, an opportunity, and one thing we've talked about a lot is, if we put another boy cabin in the girl cabin, you know, that's going to generate additional funds. The infrastructure's already there, right? It's just a matter of doing it. So that's one of the things that I think we wanted to talk about at some point towards the end of this. Well, hopefully in the next, hopefully in the next couple minutes. Okay, so this, again, this is proposed tuition rates. You can see the current rates for the residents for one week, the out-of-county fee, and then the proposed rates by camp staff would be increasing the rate by $15, and then increasing the out-of-county fee by 100, by $25, and so on and so forth. So this is proposed from staff, certainly, you know, input from board. You know, we are running at an operational profit. So, I mean- So, I mean, obviously, we're, at this point, you know, we are profitable. It's, I think the one thing that's the biggest challenge is the inflation, and like the lack of unknowns, or the abundance of unknowns, because we saw significant inflation this summer. Is that going to be an issue next year? Food, fuel, do we want to provide additional compensation for counselors? Kind of all those things kind of come into play. And that was, I think, for the rationale for increasing the fee was to provide additional compensation for counselors, because those rates have been pretty low for a while. And we do have a slide, I think the next slide possibly. So I guess at this point, we'll open it up, and we'll, you know, obviously, this, as we've talked about, we'll bring back a packet, which will include a rate, whether it's the same rate, or an increased rate, and in terms of like the out-of-county fee, et cetera, now would be a good time to provide some input on if we think we're good where we're at, if we think we need to increase, to increase pay.
And the reason that it's time sensitive, because once the campers are selected for their sessions, and the number of scholarships are distributed, and then if there's any seats open, the out-of-county campers have a session, they open up the accounts to the families, so they start making payments towards it. So we have to know what the rate will be, so that they, I don't know, I think it's broken up into 25, 25, 50, I don't know how it goes, but they break it up, just as long as it's all paid by a certain date. So we do need to know this pretty quickly.
So I don't, the $15 increase, I asked what was that based on, because my grocery bill has increased more than $15 per week, and it's just two, three people in my house right now. I mentioned to you about the counselor pay. I am, I'm not comfortable with that being as low as it is. So I think it needs to be more. And I've asked for justification, like, for how we got there, and I didn't, we haven't gotten that. So if I could, if I could wrap my head around it, then I wouldn't just be wanting to throw out a number. But I don't like to just throw out a number, because there really should be a method to how we're doing this and justifying it. So when people, when our customers push back and say, "Oh, why y'all went up on camp?" I mean, but the people, the people that are doing this, most likely, if they can afford it, they're probably not going to fuss about it. But we can say we increased camp because we got inflation, we have in rising costs of labor, we have rising fuel costs, supplies. I mean, those are all legitimate things. We need to do things for the camp. If we want to expand and put another building out there, we need to recover the money, kind of sort of now, instead of going into the 1.5 mill to do that, or the general fund. So I think the rate needs to be higher than $15 for in-county fee, but I don't know what it needs to be.
I see you gave us a comparison on the next two slides, and I agree with Ms. Surtin that $15 doesn't seem like enough, but I'm looking more like Camp Amokale, Camp Kaluqua. That might be closer in that range. And the pay on that next slide?
So, so the pay portion was pretty interesting to try to get our hands on. We did have, you know, requests for that information earlier in the week. And I will say that most camps are pretty reluctant to provide said, such information. We were able to touch base with Camp Montgomery, which I think is on Crystal Lake, and then, I'm sorry, and then Camp Amokale. You can see there at 300, Montgomery is at 200, and you can see the recommendation for the years of service, 200, 225, 250, 275.
So I think this is probably an area where we need to do more homework before we ask you, like Ms. Surtin, who doesn't like to pull a number out of a hat, so that we're comparing camps also based on, is it a five-day camp, six-day camp, seven-day camp? And I'm not sure I know that information. So maybe we need to put together that, so that you're not, like, when you compare to Camp Kalakwa, for instance, to us, or Camp Amokale, is that one seven-day week, or a five-day week? And none of my kids went to Camp Crystal, so I'm embarrassed to announce that out here in front of everyone. So I don't know, I know, I feel like the Lone Ranger here, I've been a horrible mother, but I don't know how many nights is a week of camp at Camp Crystal?
Five.
Five nights. So I, before, I would feel better also about asking you to advise us on the increase in the rates. If we're going to use this as a point of comparison, how many nights these other camps are?
So if we're holding, if we're holding off on making a decision, that means that the camp director is not releasing anything and acting, because board hasn't given direction on that, right? Is that, is that what that means?
Correct.
Agreed. So we would bring that to the January meeting?
Okay.
Would that work?
I think that would work. I'm looking at the board direction, things that you wanted. I think we've given-
You have.
We've given, have we given adequate input on the scholarship process, the registration and selection?
Yeah, well, I'm, yes. I think on the selection piece, I'm a little fuzzier, and I want to put together a draft and send to you for feedback, and then we'll bring a packet that has all the procedures to the board meeting. So I think what we're on hold, because we need more information, is the rate increases. But then, these are the other, like, potential funding sources that we said. We don't currently allow just day campers during the summer, but that's a potential revenue stream for people who are new to camping, may not be comfortable with overnight camping, but would like to participate in, you know, climbing, fishing, bow and arrowing.
They wouldn't take up a cabin. I mean, that's kind of the limitation, is the number of beds we have. So if there's no need for bed, that's just kind of like icing on the cake, for lack of a better expression.
Would we, like, how would, how would Alachua County campers get there for day camp?
Aaron.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we would have much demand for in-county campers.
And because we've never asked, I don't know, and it might be something that starts small, and I think this is where, this is-
You would send them for a week?
For, at least for a day.
I don't think they would allow, how would you price it?
Like other day camps, like O2B and-
Yeah.
I bet I don't say names, Girls Place and all-
Well, I don't, I don't know of a camp where you can just go, in the summer, you had, I always had to pay about a week.
No, I think this intends it to be for the week, but just during the day, not spending the night.
Just spend, yeah.
So I do think the intention is to be a day camper in session one, and then you'd just be added to however they divide them up. You're the gophers, you're the turtles, you're the raccoons, and you go do all the things, but you don't spend the night. That's how I understood it.
I think there'd be parents interested in that.
So when Alice was saying he would send them for one day, that's what I meant. He meant one day out of the five.
We won't take his kids.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was saying.
There may be some parents who would drive, you know, and just bring their kids for the day. Like you say, it's another option.
There are some, I mean, as I understand it, I'm not a camp director, that recruiting more diverse campers is something that camps across the country are working on, and an entry point for people who might not be comfortable sending away their children for sleepaway camp, or, I mean, I shared custody of my oldest child back and forth in the summer, and when she was with me, I didn't want her to be gone for a week or two weeks. But maybe I would let her go to the day, because I'm at work. So there may be a market for this. I just think we would need your direction. Is that something to explore?
Yeah, I think so.
It could be an opportunity, I mean, obviously physically located in Clay County, to provide some options for out-of-county campers without taking spots. Just a thought.
Now, that, but that's something, because that's closer. I can't imagine a Gainesville, an Alachua County, driving to Clay County.
It's far.
And I'm, I'm with staff, because that's going to bring on an additional layer of staff.
We talked about additional camp cabins. I do feel like you've given us good direction on the out-of-county campers, although I don't think you've given us direction on the out-of-county fee. So I guess we'll get that final direction when you have more information, so that you feel like you can give us good guidance on the weekly fees. Then it would make sense to do the out-of-county at that same time. And then counselor pay.
So the cabins, the additional cabin, you couldn't bring a cabin on in time for this summer, correct?
I don't, I don't think-
Not likely with the permitting and whatnot. I know that, you know, there's state bids for, you know, state, the state arc system, that they have, like, they're kind of like their bid system. We could certainly look at it, of course, would defer to superintendent Andrew, but I think that would definitely be pushing it for next summer. But it's, you know, it's, we're looking at, you know, transforming the camp, looking long-term, and trying to fix and provide additional revenues. You know, you don't, unfortunately, you can't just click your heels and do that, but I think we're heading in the right direction, in my opinion. And, you know, additional cabins certainly would, would help a lot in terms of the cost of camp and the revenue generated.
So just a couple things on your thoughts about the day camp. If it was one day a week, you know, we could look at transportation, depending on that. We have bus drivers, right, as far as what that would look like if we had a full bus. We can also look at other camps. Some camps want to take their kids on field trips for a day, so some of the other local camps in the summertime might take their kids out there for a day, or look at those options, too, because many of them are looking for field trips that are meaningful, and that are somewhat nearby, within an hour's drive, is, but yet it's a trip for the kids. And then just throwing numbers out there, like, that we're not necessarily just tossing out there. I think you look at your day fees. If it's going to be 120 a day, you land on a fee of 600 for campers. Whatever it is, I think we go up for, just, this is just my opinion, whatever we go up for our residents, then I, I would think we would go up that similar amount. If we went up $55 for in-county, certainly our out-of-counties should go to, you know, 125, 150, whatever it is. And I think if they're, if they're there for two weeks, then those fees should be doubled. It shouldn't be the same, just my opinion, that their additional fee, or is that what it is? If I'm there for two weeks, is it a, it is double? Okay, just wanted to make sure. It wasn't on the slide, but I was trying to clarify that, that-
So I'm not sure about that either, because it does show on this slide, and camp staff helped with these fees. So I think there is a chance. It's the same fee, but I will do more homework on that.
And time sensitive was my only question. When you say time sensitive, is this something that we would bring some proposed fees back on January 11th?
Yes.
Or just a brief sharing with them at the workshop?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. And that would work with the fees that you have to get out to families and collecting and all of that? That still works with?
The deadline to apply for the scholarships is January 31st. So I think that it's after that, that the camp minder starts asking, letting the families know, this is what your total is. So if I got a scholarship, I would know I was in for the 10% when it was due, but-
Thank you.
And let me ask one last thing. I know you asked for board direction. How, how are we advertising this? I think marketing is important as well. How are we advertising, getting it out to the families?
Yeah, we do have a slide on it. I mean, primarily, we pitch it when the kids are there in second and fifth grade, and I hear what you're saying about what do second and fifth graders come home and talk about. We work with the teachers to really help us identify kids who would want to participate, but they're afraid they may not know about the opportunity, or know about scholarship opportunities, and then just the website and social media. So-
Like, what about announcements? Like, when at schools, and at, "Good morning, campers, you know, Camp Crystal is coming." I mean, I just think we need to do a better job of marketing.
In fact, we could probably make, like, a promotional video that they could, you know, show on the morning news to remind them of the great time they have-
Because we're trying to generate, if we can, that way, maybe we can generate more people to want to participate, and, you know, eventually get to, it can be more self-sustaining, we want to keep going in the right direction. But I think marketing is important as well.
I still think we need to reach parents. So is there something through Skyward where-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think things like that should go home, because I don't-
Like 100 a day, so for sure.
When we were talking before about running out the space on the weekends, we were talking about, like, wedding venue. But what about, like, boys' club, girls' club, church youth groups, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, people who wouldn't want alcohol?
It's true. We've talked about, like, corporate retreats to team building, where, I mean, some would want it, but all don't. I mean, the fun ones do.
All of my children are from Levy County. They live in Levy County, and they all want to participate in Camp Crystal. Would y'all consider, like, field trips for, like, out-of-county students? I mean, you could charge per student, you know, Levy County one week, or one day, Levy County, Gilchrist County. There's a lot of kids around here that would love that opportunity.
I think that's why it's-
Like, my kids go on field trips all the time, and they pay 10 bucks a kid. They go for the day. Just a thought.
I think that's why it's important to have that calendar for open days.
I'll make sure that's part of your packet for January 11th, is how it's booked. It's, it is booked pretty tight, like Ms. Dell said.
And then, I was going to say, you're an employee of Alachua County Schools, right?
Yes.
And that isn't specifically laid out in-
Yeah, and so it-
That's something that would be a benefit to our employees, no matter where they live.
I mean, it'd be a way to, like, you know, fill days. You got vacant days. I mean, you know, offer, you know, Clay County, or Bradford County, or, I mean, you're surrounded by nine counties. I mean-
Mrs. McGrath.
Seems like another string of revenue.
I, I think you could even do the divine nine. You don't have to have alcohol all of the time. And I think that would be sufficient for what we need with the different groups.
What's the name of the place in Keystone? We, we go for our retreats. I think, because we do our retreats at Camp-
High Springs, Kalakwa's in High Springs.
Okay. The one is in Keystone Heights. We used to do our, we do our retreats there. I don't remember the name of it, but it's like a-
Camp Keystone and Montgomery is also on the lake.
They cook for you, we use the cabinets. Yeah, it's fun. We do it as well. So, yeah, that's another option, because we look for places, too. All right. So I guess it's part of, just what just came out of the discussion from our, from, when? No, Nathan, Nathan, please, I always get them mixed up. Pardon me. What came from Nathan is we possibly need to have something for employees who want to bring their kids to camp, even if they don't live in the county, huh?
who want to bring their kids to camp, even if they don't live in the county, huh? No, it's part of just being able to, yeah, being able to get into the facility, because we've said that they couldn't, out-of-county if you're not. But if you're an employee and you drive in, I don't know.
I had said that earlier. I wasn't maintaining just for employees. I said it almost two hours ago.
No, but that, I mean, Neely, I, I get that, because, but we had just said that it's part of the lottery. We, the county residents, Alachua County residents would be served.
I wasn't waiting it for the lottery part. I'm just saying how we can earn more money.
Right, okay, yes, we did. And they, and I, they said that if we didn't have, I think it was said, if we didn't have, if we had space, we would, we'd open it up to out-of-county residents. But I guess what I was trying to say is the, for employees, they would kind of get the same weight as an in-county employee, in-county resident, because they're, because they're an employee.
I have no problem with that.
So, all right, thank you all. I guess when we have, when you all put this together, we had a lot of things on this agenda, and it was put together. We, the most important part, I should have reorganized, and then we got the student data first, and then we got to y'all. Mr. Prescott, you ready? Um, so we need a break. So Prescott, you want to get, let us come back at 6:00 and then you come over? Come on over and we.
He's going to come sit right here.
Okay, go ahead and take your break, Dr. McNeely. Everybody, take your break. Yeah, I'm going to get me a piece of chocolate here.
For sure. Yes. I, I second that. All in favor? Right. I should have passed out cheeseburgers on the break. Okay, thank you, thank you again. This is what you've all been waiting for, because this is why we're here. This is why we're all here. It's about our students and how they are doing. And I want to just again, thank Mrs. Surtin for getting the ball rolling on ABC Scorecard and reports. I want to just, again, a brief look back, but a super brief one tonight, and let you know where we began with this. The first ABC report came to the board last month, and we got feedback from that board and anyone else who was there to give us input. The district team, which included the superintendent, put together a team of representative. Oh, you know what? I'm, I'm sorry, let me slow down. I made a few changes to the slide deck, but I didn't, there's nothing new. I consolidated some, so. And, and also, I want to give a shout out to Taylor Gilfillan, who did lots of great work, including the work that Mr. Coles helped with and the entire Office of Accountability Evaluation and Analytics. He is away doing some professional learning and has entrusted me with the ABC report. And when the district team gets together, Mr. Andrew brings not just the data team, not just teaching and learning, Dr. Edwards and our turnaround principals and our executive directors for elementary and secondary are there, and our director of curriculum, because we're all, we're all on the same page when it comes to the need for us to support all of our students, but making sure that we're knowing which of our students need more attention and support and intervention. So the team got together to synthesize that feedback that we received from the board on November 2nd, but also feedback that we got from all of our school-based administrators who received at their November administrator meetings, a school-specific ABC report. It was funny, we had already been planning to do that with them at the November meeting, but those who watched or heard about this ABC report coming to the board, like we're, you know, blowing up everybody's phones, like, hey, can I get one of these for my school? So they do, they have them. The changes that you mentioned or that anyone administrator brought to us have been incorporated into the scorecard and the report. And today, we're going to show you our interpretation of that feedback that we got and hear what more or different you'd like to see next month when it's the first item on the workshop agenda. So what we're going to do tonight, I'm going to show you what updates were made to the scorecard. I'm going to review and kind of orient you to both the scorecard, which is the one-pager, okay? And the ABC report, which is the stapled landscape. It's sort of like, this is the menu, and then this is all seven courses of the meaty meal. That was for Mr. Gilfillan, who always requests that I work a food reference into a presentation. So let's go ahead and dig into our items. What we heard from you about the scorecard and from our principals is that they wanted a school-level ABC report, because they understand well, as you do, the power of tracking our progress towards aligned goals that are understood by all of us. So within that week of sharing with you, we turned around and had our school-level ABC scorecards. They were part of all of our principal and assistant principal meetings. So they had a chance to learn how to use them, how to learn to access a dashboard central that put a lot of this live data in real time in one place, in the hands of all of our administrators. And those administrators had the opportunity to share back with district staff and also curriculum specialists, their feedback and the ideas and things that they needed to support their teachers as they, and their students as they worked towards their school improvement planning goals. We are, at your request, changing to some of this data being reported monthly versus quarterly. Although the caveat is, some of the, especially in the core academics, we don't have new data every month, if we're talking about Progress Monitoring 1, Progress Monitoring 2, for instance. So we've also incorporated some of that disaggregated data that you've requested. So again, just as last month, I want to remind you, this is not, it's not a final product. It's a living document. The scorecard specifically was designed to be a cover sheet, sort of an at-a-glance, the thing that grabbed your attention and gives you a high-level overview and lets you identify quickly what things you want to dig in more deeply that you would do with the ABC report. But all of the goals in the A, in the B, and the C are aligning with our focus as a district and specifically with our school improvement plans and, and for those students who need the most support. So just very briefly, I think we all know that our ABCs stand for attendance, behavior, and core academics, because at the most basic level, we have to know, are our students coming to school? Are they safe and are they learning? So I've already said, the scorecard is like the cover sheet, and the report is like the details. I think the power of the scorecard, when you're looking at this, is looking at the district-wide goals that are giving us a common bar. So this would allow me, as a building principal with my ABC report, to know where I am in regards to the district averages, or as a middle school principal, how I was compared to other middle schools. Or if I was the principal of an SI school, how I compared both to SI schools and to all elementary schools and to the district. It also, from the district perspective, helps us identify how we can support our educators. How do we use our resources of time and talent, which is so precious right now with the shortage we have on experts to support our teachers, to upscale our teachers, to increase the frequency and quality of feedback to our teachers? I told you what ABC is again. So our, our attendance is going to be a month. Look month by month at district attendance, attendance in SI schools, and then attendance of our SS subgroups of African-American students, students with disabilities and English language learners, as well as tracking the percent of our students who are chronically absent. We talked a little bit about the up and down arrows and red and green. So red is bad, green is good. And sometimes numbers going up are good, and sometimes numbers going up are bad. So this is also, when you're on the scorecard, a quick way to see overall trends. Like overall red, that's lots of bad, and behavior, overall green. We like when we see more overall green. So most of the changes to the scorecard and the report this month are going to live in the attendance and behavior portions, because that's what changes monthly, as we're reporting it here, but daily, as you know. So I'm going to take a breath and ask for feedback on specifically on the scorecard, on the attendance section.
Is, is there a way to break down excused and unexcused, like percent of absences that are excused versus unexcused? So we can see like, you know, how much of this decrease in attendance is due to the flu and RSV that we're seeing? And how much of it is due to kids just not showing up? up, kind of thing?
Yes, so we can disaggregate it by attendance status. A lot of those things wouldn't necessarily fit in this scorecard cover page, but it is something that we could include in the backup report.
Of course.
If I might add too, that one of the reasons that they didn't share that information or disaggregate it that way is that some of those... What may seem as unexcused absences may be due to discipline or suspension, or there may be students who are absent that may be excused but their parents didn't provide notes, so the data may not be as clean as it appears. It can be provided, but it may not tell you exactly what you were looking for.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. I would also like to add that staff spend a lot of time in spirited conversation about what is like the most... Like, what could we lift up as the thing that we wanted most to be on the scorecard? Because like, I'm super nerdy about all of this and all of us kind of are, and we want to know all of the things all of the time, but we wanted there to really be kind of like two different tools. One, that gave you a high level, let you have conversations with your PTAs and your school advisory councils, or your grade-level groups, or your departments around focusing efforts, or if you're soliciting volunteers for something, or funding for behavior incentives, something that you could use that's sort of more accessible to everyone versus people that really want to, you know, dig into the nitty-gritty in the report. So, I think that's again, Dr. Rockwell, where you'd see, you know, some of those things like you're requesting with the caveat that Dr. Edwards mentions, that even sometimes if we did all of that, you still don't have the full... Like, there's a lot of different ways we could be providing that information.
What is chronically absent? How many absences?
So, chronically absent is if you miss 10% or more of the school day, or excuse me, of the school year. So, this is, when it's provided here on the scorecard, it's during each of those months. So, for example, during the month of August, 22.6% of students missed 10% or more of that month.
That's a really big number.
Ms. Wise, are we tracking student tardies and absences due to bus delays and no-shows? So, like, a child may miss school because the bus didn't... They didn't have a driver and they went back home.
We can identify absences or attendance rates by transportation status, but it's not always recorded, and they were absent because they missed the bus, or they were tardy because they missed the bus.
Well, I think if the parent sends a note in, right, they would know. It wouldn't be counted negatively against them. But that's why I was wondering if we have any way in Skyward that we could, you know, when that bus is late or a no-show, that we could put that in, that's not dependent upon the parent doing anything.
Right. And the issue of the parent note does come up in terms of excusing the number of absences, but there's also just something to be said for understanding how many days of school you're missing, no matter, you know, planes, trains, or automobiles, what the reason is.
Completely agree. Completely agree. But what I'm saying is, we do have some students and we...
For sure.
I've been called and told, you know, about the bus. And so, I think that's a metric that... I know, I'm not saying we do it, but that's the reason why I ask, is that's something that's a challenge that we're having and that is, that's good data to be able to have to share.
So, maybe that's something we could add, and I'd probably have to work with Mr. Jones, not on the scorecard, but in the report, is like... And maybe I even heard this was brought up, I don't know, it's like all been one big meeting, like, which routes are uncovered the most? You wanted that information? I think then, knowing that by school, or by neighborhood even, and I know that Prescott's office does know that, like, where, how kids are transported based on where they live. So, we can work on something for that, for the January, in the report, not the scorecard necessarily.
Also, for attendance, when it's entered in there, there were changes that were just submitted to the schools or what have you, that when we do, for instance, our administrative excuses, because we are permitted to do something like that for our late buses, that we would not just code it that way, they would still go in as an excuse, but the notation has to come from the school for the reason. And so, I think it really is dependent upon making sure that the schools understand that those attendance data entry persons have to make sure that they're putting that notation in. They can put that, this student was tardy to school, and the reason in the notation comment can be bus number, whatever, was late, right? And so, that's really, I think, more in training with staff and putting that out there, and we would still be able to pull that data.
I'm thinking this would be for the report as well, but we probably also need some chronic tardy data. Maybe not all the tardies, but like the percent of students that are chronically tardy or that are more than, missing more than half the day, or something like that.
That's one of the things that our school principals requested as well.
SI schools have tardies, that's why I thought it was in there.
Moving on to the behavior section of our scorecard. This is rooted in our MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support goals, that our MTSS district team and our school teams are working on. It says, "The out-of-school suspension days are shown the proportionality of total days assigned." So, if you look at the... We have the total number of out-of-school suspension days and then the number of students each day on average, and then as you go down, break down, much like attendance, out-of-school days by percentage to our SI school students, and then our SS subgroups, African-Americans, students with disabilities, and English language learners. And then, within that, we also look at the percent of students who are, if you think about the tiers, students with zero to one offense, two to five, and six or more, with our goal being the breakdown to be that of students with offenses, 80% of them will be one or fewer, 15%, two to five, and less than 5%, six or more.
So, Mrs. Wise, I wanted to know the consistency of the reporting of the occurrences of these different behaviors. How are you guaranteeing...
Are you talking about at the school level?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I just...
A hard one. So, I want to defer that to you.
But, so, in the clarification of the question, you're wanting to know, how do we know across schools that all deans or teachers are writing referrals, or... Or that they're being... Or that they're turning the referrals into...
Oh, both.
Both, okay. So, the classroom management processes in the classroom would determine the referrals that are written from the classroom and then are sent to the dean. So, that is going to vary among teachers because teachers really manage and handle things differently within their classrooms, and I think it has a lot to do with whether they might use best practices or have higher levels of tolerance, whatever. When those referrals then go to our deans or our BRTs, they go in as referrals and the deans and the BRTs then utilize their matrix, best practices, progressive discipline, to make decisions about whether they will then change that referral into an offense. And so, oftentimes, a teacher would say that this referral has not been changed into offense, so no one has done anything, but that's not the case. It may be determined by the dean that that referral does not have to become an offense for a student. And so, what we're working on as we move forward with the guide is to help teachers understand, because I think there's been a lot of confusion around not being able to see comments when they don't turn into an offense. When deans take an action, regardless of whether it remains a referral or becomes an offense, teachers can still see the action that has been taken. The question is, can you actually go in and do you know how to find that action in Skyward? So, we're trying to clarify that process. The deans have monthly meetings to try and ensure that the process that they are following is streamlined, and we're working on PD for that as well, because I think that the hardship that we have had is just how people view those things and what may be given as a result of different consequences for kids across the board. It's, has been inconsistent, and I think that we are just really trying to make sure that we're all on the same page in streamlining processes and that we are allowing referrals to turn to offenses when needed. And there are times when they're not. There are times when referrals are written for, you know, the student broke their pencil or what have you, and it was disruptive in class. A dean receives that or a BRT, they're not gonna change that to an offense, but a teacher may feel like it needs to be an offense. That doesn't mean that the dean hasn't called home, hasn't spoken to the student, hasn't provided, you know, other ways of responding or using restorative practices, though. Sounds very muddy because it is. It is, I'm sorry.
With them writing these referrals, and you're talking about everybody being on the same page, are we meeting with the deans now and everybody getting together to try to figure out, because this is alarming? So...
So, and we know that there is, you know, great disproportionality, and one of the questions we had even in our most recent MTSS meeting, because of the focus has been discipline, is also, however, addressing what the state guidelines are. The state doesn't really... You choose my words wisely. There are concerns about meeting state mandates and dealing with culturally sensitive responses to discipline. And so, one of the questions that I asked when we had a state representative is, how would you like for us to manage and move forward when the state is requiring that we have to lessen the discipline issues because of the disproportionality, but at the same time is telling us that we don't, shouldn't be teaching about cultural sensitivity? I mean, you know, it's kind of a catch-22 because that is part of the issue in addressing discipline concerns, when you have a one culture or ethnicity that far outnumbers and outranks other students or their peers when it comes to discipline referrals, if you don't want us to address culture when we're actually talking about classroom management practices. And so, in that, that is what we are waiting for back from the state representative on how that has been managed even through PBIS, because that has been part of how they have taught. Some of the classroom management practices has included that, and so what changes have they made since the state requirements have also...
And I understand, we have those changes, but in the meantime, we still gotta look at, like, you know, I went to one middle school, you got about 25 kids out of 700, so we need to start pulling these children and seeing what's going on and how we can work, like, it may be a focus program. Me, I'm a big proponent of Horizon. That's why I call it the transitional school of success, but in middle and high school, we may not... Elementary, you may not have to pull kids, but this... We're getting to the point now where teachers are being hit, you know, adults are being hit in the school. So, in the meantime, we got to pull and have those conversations about these children. If not, we're gonna lose a lot of our people, you know, this here. And I get what you're saying about, we need, we're waiting on policy and those things, but where are we actually in the truancy, having a conversation? Because I'm understanding too, with EPT, oh, I guess that the little... It takes three EPTs to refer people, or a school board member has to be present, you know, that policy to, at your truancy meetings.
Or alternative placement?
Yeah. And so, then they're saying the process doesn't move forward because of school board members. So, I would have to look back at that, at that policy, but in the meantime, our discipline is a huge problem that we got to move forward with doing something. So, I don't know where the team is, we're meeting with that as well, but as a board member, I visit, I'm visiting. And so, if you're in those classrooms every day, we have to find a way to support those teachers and have... Because, and that's another thing, and that leads to the SRO. So, it's a lot that goes hand-in-hand because the SRO is not responsible for discipline, unless it absolutely have to. So, teachers are asking, well, what is their role? So, all of us got to get to the table as soon as possible, because I'm not a teacher, but I understand what teachers are saying. You're in this classroom, but the discipline... And when we look at students with disabilities, English language learners, that's because a lot of them kids probably can't read, we know there may be some referrals, what is their intolerance for culture and those type of things, but this data, we got to sit down and see what we can do, do different, because middle school and high school, these teachers are really struggling and complaining about getting hit, and we don't want people getting hit. We shouldn't be in that situation.
So, and I think, as you speak, you're talking about recidivism and then the continuum, right, in terms of behavior among students? And so, there are definitely a smaller number of students who have higher numbers of referrals, and that is the group that you're talking about targeting, right? Who are the specifics kids at schools that are repeating behaviors or having more aggressive behaviors within the classroom? And so, those are some of those things that we have to pull and have been having conversations about, and the different professional development that needs to exist, not just with the teachers, but then also the other piece of that, that I have talked about, is really the responsibility also where we have to make those connections with parents, because a lot of it also connects in terms of the parenting that is taking place. It's not just the school's responsibility to address the behavior of the students, and cannot, we cannot do it without parents. And so, definitely the... And I know that you've mentioned this before, and when we had orientation, whatever, you know, suggestions, and I said then, I was open to it and I certainly still am, and our team, I can talk a lot about, you know, the different PD that we have and how we're moving forward and whatever other suggestions, how we can try to manage some of those things.
We have just like broad counts of behavior incidents. In Skyward, does it break down by type of incident? Can we get counts by that? Because there's a big difference between having, you know, 100 minor incidents, but only five adults got hit, not that any adult should get hit, but if it's 100 adults got hit and five minor incidents, those are very, very different.
It's in the report, right?
Is it?
I think we were... There is some of that in the ABC report. This was just sort of kind of the high-level glance at the scorecard, but once you dig into that report, and you may not have the time or endurance to do that sitting here at this table, but just know that you can, you know, always let us know...
Oh, here it is.
...what you want to see more of. So, but I will also just say that the data dashboard available to each of the schools, like, they click on that and they go... It brings you right to their school-specific data, by kid, by event, I mean, everything is at their fingertips to really help identify the students that need those Tier Two and Tier Three supports.
Do we have some definitions for like what's considered an unsafe act, what's considered a classroom disruption, or that we could get?
So, those are defined in the Code of Conduct.
In the Code of Conduct, okay. Perfect.
So, is there any more feedback on the behavior section of the scorecard? Okay. Thank you. All right, C, this is my favorite one. So, there... Right. So, there's nothing new on the core academics on the scorecard because it is, this high-level look is on our progress monitoring, our state progress monitoring. You will see in the report, some, where available, some updated results that were not available to us at that workshop on, I think it was November 2nd, so we had, as soon as that window closed and we got all of that.
I just have a question about FAST. I've only seen the kindergarten test, but my understanding is third through fifth is very similar to FSA, is that correct?
What do you mean by very similar?
Well, the questions, it's very... It's in the same format as FSA. The questioning requires maybe a slightly higher level of reasoning to answer it.
No. The question from Ms. Abbott is, does the similarity you feel between FAST, three through five, and FSA? I mean, a big change is it's computer-based, but I think you're specifically speaking to... but I think you're specifically speaking to item types?
Yes.
Because it's going to also be testing them on the new standards, which is why this is a benchmarking year.
And so I guess I, I'm, I'm looking more for the rigor of FSA. I'm asking if that's there. And I've heard that it was very similar to the type of questioning.
Here's a microphone. Hi, and yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott, I do think that what you're talking about are the item types and the type of complexity. The difference is they're aligned to the new best benchmarks. So, you know, they are completely different items. However, the way they're structured, the readability of the text, those types of things do look similar, other than, you know, it is happening three times per year in their computer-based assessments.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's just clarifying that.
I was serviceable on that, huh? Okay. I, I did just want to explain the target that the district team chose of that, that sixty-two percent is the percent of points required to make an A. However, we're looking for that in, and you'll see that in the report throughout all of our subgroups. Not a school average of a sixty-two, but we're looking for that by subgroup, by school. So, any feedback on the core academic section, which looks very similar to, actually, this looks exactly like last month's on the scorecard? All right, so here's the whole seven-course meal. You've got the report, and this is basically more detailed and disaggregated data from what you saw on the scorecard. And we added some of those more disaggregated data by socioeconomic status and race and ethnicity at your request. However, if as you look through here, you have other data elements that you would like to see made available, we can make that happen. This is where you're going to see a lot more in-depth reporting, like pulling, for instance, the SI schools out. But also, like, when someone, sorry, I forget, when you ask by the type of offense, when you go in, it's broken up by, by school, by grade level within schools, and then within grade bands, like elementary, middle, and high, by type of offense. And then just remember that if you're a principal, and when you click on this, this is just your students by grade level, by offense.
So, I'm curious, one of the, one of the things I'd like to see is if we can document the impact of UFLY. I don't know if there's a way to separate out students who like weren't in the district last year and compare their scores to ones who were, who got UFLY? Because I know, like, it's hard to compare last year's test when we've completely changed our assessment, but just some things so that, you know, because we're spending Essar funds and those will eventually run out.
We can absolutely do that. Anything else you'd like to see? I know it's hard, because there's a- So this would be, yes, I'm seeing things that I asked for last month, or I'm not seeing something like, how do our students who are in year two of UFLY look compared to our students who are in year one of UFLY? Is that, did I understand you correctly?
Yeah, but also comparing, like, all of our second graders. Some of them probably came from out of district where they didn't have it. So I want to compare that apples to apples, because like if we look at, you know, our third graders compared to our fourth graders, it might look a little weird, because those kids who are in third grade now, think about this when we like look at the DIBELS data. Our current third graders lost the last third of kindergarten, because we suddenly went to online learning without the teachers being prepared for that, so.
Tell me how comparing, did you say comparing a third grader who had UFLY to a third grader who didn't have UFLY? Was that it, or did you say second grade?
I mean, any grade, it doesn't matter. I just don't want to like compare our third graders who lost half of kindergarten to a grade that didn't. You know what I'm saying? I want to make sure we're, we're not conflating those two different things.
So if we had a sec, so let's just, this, if we stick with, let's just say second graders, this year's second graders. Because they would have had UFLY last year.
They were with us.
If they were with us. But if they were not with us, I don't think, I'm not sure what value that gives, because we don't know what the school, what type of program the school, or curriculum the school that they came from.
Oh, no.
I'm not an educator, I'm the accountant, so I felt real good talking about Camp Crystal. So, so I have to, I have to like kind of lean in on you guys, but to me, I, I don't see the value in that, and I'm not sure what that's going to give us to say whether or not we should continue on with UFLY or we should discontinue that. But I'm gonna, I'm open to hearing more on that.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I don't know what would be the best way. Maybe, maybe the data team will have some suggestions, just ways that we can look at what, what added value we're getting out of it. Because as Essar wraps up, if it's giving us a lot of added value, then we have to figure out how, if we want to continue that, how we can.
And Dr. Lane is really collaborating with us on tracking not just the results of the students who are getting UFLY, but even compared within that fidelity checks to how the UFLY is being implemented according to the fidelity of the model based, how are those students doing compared to where the teacher's either more novice or the program isn't being implemented in the same way?
I could see what Dr. Rockwell is asking, requesting, but I can't, I can have to agree with Mrs. Surtin. How would it, how would you be able to conclude anything with students who may have been in first grade last year but not with us? And who had not had UFLY? And now we're trying to make some comparisons? I don't, I don't know if-
So I, I was going to say, that's some of the work that Dr. Lane has with their research, is they're able to control for those different factors, where if we're looking at our data, and we're looking at the second-grade FAST scores for the groups of students who had UFLY experience and the students that didn't, we wouldn't necessarily be able to draw any conclusions, like you're saying, because there are so many other factors that go into that. So some of the work that her team is doing and the progress that she's recording and reporting about the efficacy of those programs does control for that. So I think she, she has that.
This one is dead. Oh, no, no, it's working, okay, sorry, it took a second. So, yeah, we do have some of this available that we can certainly share with you. And, you know, a lot of it came from our first-year implementation, where we looked at the DIBELS from the previous year, where students who didn't have UFLY. So for, just as an overview, last year, the students in kindergarten and first grade started the year behind where the year before started. But they ended the year way above after having UFLY foundations. And there's lots of different effect sizes and all kinds of statistical stuff that Dr. Lane and her team have worked out. But we'll make sure you have a copy of all of that. And we'll continue to study it, because one thing we didn't have last year was FAST, because it's new. But we will continue to do that work. The other piece is, we're working real closely with the fidelity of implementation, looking at dosage quality and adherence to what the program is offering, and looking at student results connection to the implementation of the curriculum. So we're working on that throughout the year, and we'll make sure that you have that information as well.
So is there any other feedback about the report? And please know that at any time, like, you, you go home and you finally get your cheeseburger and you're flipping through it, and you're like, "Ugh, I wish I would have asked for, fill in the blank." Send that email, send it to me or to Prescott, and we will make sure that that's included in the report. And I will be very excited to get some of that UFLY information that Dr. Lane has given us, comparing students who lost a lot of school, like you're saying, Dr. Rockwell, beginning in kindergarten and then had UFLY last year, and where they ended up compared to peers who hadn't missed part or all of kindergarten and first. Unless you have other questions.
I have none. Do either, anyone else have, have a question?
I know, we're going to put it first next time.
Yep, put it first next time, rookie error on my part, not organizing the agenda.
I should have shouted from the rooftops, something's-
Yeah, you guys are experienced, y'all been through this a lot.
I know, I know better.
This is my first time being the chair. I'm new at this, I'm a novice. Well, I thank, thank you to staff, for you all, the presentations, and thank you to my colleagues for your participation and input, for your guidance if there's, in reviewing this. As Ms. Wise said, if you see something you'd like to see in the report or whatever, email them. We have a caller, wonderful, thank you. Hold on, we got a caller. Caller, please state your name, you have three minutes with the board. Caller, welcome, you, please state your name, you have three minutes with the board.
My name is Tina Daye, and I just want to say, this workshop has been excellent. I've been off and on, because it has been a long time, a long, but I learned so much information. I was, but I was calling about the pre-K. I understand, Chair, certain about the money and the fiscal, but then I think we sometimes may have to overlook the money if, if it's for the benefit of the good. I think adding a, a program for the summer is, would be beneficial, because I have, I had one daughter that was in a blended program, and she was very non-verbal, and she was able to access some of the ESC services during the head start. And right now, she's in the IB program. So I think it's beneficial for, you know, regardless, maybe, it took me, it seemed like it still finances a little bit. I also have another daughter that is trying to get evaluated for services. So, and she's about to become two, which is hard to believe. So maybe in another year, she might have to take part in this program also. So I, like I said, I can agree, sympathize with the financial, but sometimes we have to save, maybe spend more money if it's going to benefit, benefit the kids. Also, sometimes there were so many people, children that was waiting to be evaluated by the four-years-old. I, I was saying, that may be a lot of parent denial of the children getting evaluated, because they really should get evaluated before they turn four. But once you put them in the VB, VBK program, then you can actually see the, you know, why they need to be evaluated. Because I had to be a denial of my firstborn. We just parent, we, we thought our kids, you know, didn't want to have the learning or the speech, so a lot of that is why the kids get long to be evaluated, because of parent denial. But thank you very much.
Thank you for calling. All right, we haven't, if, any citizens in the room have any input? Okay, if seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank, what'd you say? Oh, Lord. Caller, please state your name. Caller, please state your name, you have three minutes with the board.
Thank you, Chair Surtin, Armando Grundy Gomez. I wanted to come back to the article you all were having a workshop on earlier with regards to Camp Crystal. Is that going to be coming, coming back toward, for the public hearing or during the general meeting as a discussion? Because I actually have further questions. I know you all had some things that you talked about, but some things that I recall that I'd like to have discussed is that I believe Mr. Rela had like a committee or something that was going over the, the rate structure and was making decisions on things that really should be coming back to the board for more oversight. And could we have more of a public input and meeting on that to further flesh out things and discussions with regards to Camp Crystal?
January, it'll be back in January.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yes. Thank you for calling.
All right, all right, thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.